Topics for tonight. Up first is Neighborhood Engagement Program Manager Madeline Hinckus, here to present a consideration for Citizen of the Year. Good evening. Yes?
Can you hear me now? Yes. Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm here to ask Council to review the nominations and select the 2023 Citizen of the Year. In your packet, you will find the three nomination forms that were submitted. The nominees this year are Meg Donaldson, Scott Gilbert, and Kelly Utter-McKloskey. Please let me know if you guys have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hinckus. Any questions for Ms. Hinckus? Seeing none, does anybody want to start discussion on Citizen of the Year, on any of the three candidates? Mayor Protam?
One of these nominees is a District Four candidate, resident and repeat nominee, and that is Kelly Utter-McKloskey. I'll admit that I did not give her fair recognition the last time she was nominated, given that I had never met her last year, and I've had in the intervening year quite a bit of experience in several discussions with her. Recognizing the contribution she makes to the city, she's my favorite nominee this year. That's not just to make light of any of the contributions that any of the other nominees have made to our community. I just support Kelly this year.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Member Noonkamp?
Thank you, Mayor. This feels like, what do we call that, like a many riches? Because we've got really three great candidates for this award this year. I did want to share just because I'm guessing that I maybe had the most interaction with Ms. Donaldson. I am the liaison to the Cultural Arts Commission and had the opportunity to interface with Ms. Donaldson multiple times as she interfaced with that commission to bring the Cherokee Lot Project to fruition. I saw her tenacious hard work in the very kind of like unglamorous ways, showing up, advocating for her community, advocating for the beautification of that community, and I was able to be there on the day of that project execution to see how she had brought together our nonprofit community members, members from our school district. We had students out there painting. It really does exemplify the kind of work that we would love to see our citizens doing to beautify our neighborhoods and to take ownership over their neighborhoods in addition to her work as a neighborhood leader. So just wanted to share that from my own personal experience. I have experienced with all three of these nominees. I think they're excellent, but I really think that she's shown in that project this year.
Thank you, Member Noonkamp. Member Wink?
Thank you, Mayor. As a member of District, or a resident of District One, beyond what Councilmember Noonkamp just stated on record, I've seen that, but also spent several years engaging with Meg Donaldson in the various activities she's executed, initiated, executed, on behalf of the betterment of the community. And so it extends over quite a large sum of years, and her work, it is tireless, and I've always loved to see how she manages to engage citizens who don't typically engage in city activities. So she's really able to bring the neighborhood together and bring forth that beautiful point of the community, right, that we've been installing through Madeline Hinckus and that department project. So my natural vote was also for Meg Donaldson, for just the tireless work I've seen her execute and the way she's done it over the last several years. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Wink. Member Woodward?
Thank you. It was interesting because I looked at the names and saw Scott Gilbert's name there, and I thought, wow, he's worthy. He's been doing stuff going back a long time because it goes back to when I was on council in the past. And he is here at almost every single meeting, I've noticed. Then I start reading Ms. Donaldson's and our other, Kelly's, Kelly Leader-McKloskey's, and I am just impressed with all three of them. And as I was going through this, I was thinking, wow, this is really a difficult choice. And as of this afternoon, I couldn't make up my mind who, you know, who was the one that I would be really promoting. So I'm just going to say, this is a hard one, and this is one I'll probably vote with the rest of council because I could vote for any one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Anyone else? Member Anderson?
Oh, I'll weigh in here. These are, all three are absolutely wonderful nominees and just pillars in our community, I think. And I think that's one, this is obviously one of the hardest things I think we have to do every, every year is to make a decision. The nominees are always, always so great. Meg Donaldson, I think for this, this time around, gets, gets my, my first choice, just because of the, the variety and kind of proactive nature she's taken in the, in the community. I've just seen so many different positive things come from what she's been doing over the years. I've had discussions with her about various ways she's served in the community and would, would love to see her get the nomination this year, though, of course, all three are wonderful candidates.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Member Russell?
Thank you. Actually, this is a pretty difficult decision because they all have contributed in their special way. But I would like to, I think that perhaps a lot of people don't really understand what Kelly McKloskey actually does. I had a woman call me from Traditions a few weeks ago, and her son has been homeless for a while and was having a lot of problems. And, I mean, I've known this in the past also, and I said to this woman, if I can get somebody to help you with your son, would that work? And she said yes. And so I called Kelly McKloskey, and Kelly McKloskey said, if he will come over to 5280 tomorrow, there will be resources. I can get him on a housing list. I can get him the medical help that he needs. And I really am impressed that there is somebody in this community that is actually working to help the homeless get the help they need. And I think that is incredibly admirable, and I greatly appreciate all you're doing, Kelly. Thank you. And for that reason, I would support Kelly McKloskey.
Thank you, Member Russell. Member Anderson, you still have?
Oh, no, sorry.
I guess I'll weigh in as well. Yeah, this, this is always very difficult, having to just pick one for the many nominees that we normally have for this type of consideration. Obviously, I, you know, I've spoken to Megan in the past. Obviously, Scott is a frequent visitor, and obviously, he is always reaching out to members of council. Obviously, I get calls from Scott all the time, so I know how engaged he is with the city. With Meg, I love what she's done within the community. I know how involved she's been setting up the Cushing Park neighborhood with Ms. Hinckus and just the work that she's done there. I do remember Ms. Utter-McKloskey from the work that she did last year, and I really have to thank her for all the work that, the volunteer time, the work that she's putting in. And, you know, we're nowhere as a city without the, without our partners within, between the Tri-City Homelessness Plan in terms of just the work that they do. And just what I've seen, or what I've read from Kelly's nomination, is just really, really impressive. And so I definitely have to lean in that direction in terms of just the work she's done to change people's lives, you know. And I, for that reason, I'll be putting my nomination in for Ms. Utter-McKloskey. Anyone else want to weigh in? I, I'm not sure if I got the numbers right, but if we could go back to Ms. Utter-McKloskey, I know that Member Ward, Member Russell, myself, was there a fourth there? I'm not sure if we actually stated our preference there, but go ahead, Ms. Noonkamp.
Yeah, I didn't state my preference earlier, but I met one-on-one with Ms. McKloskey and heard her incredible passion for the unhoused members of our community, what she's done, and the deep care that she brings to that work. Oftentimes, you know, I've seen her move to tears to care for the people who are unhoused in our community and those who have unfortunately in the last year passed away in our community, and she has really seen them. She has held their names up in our community, and I think that's really powerful. So I'm happy to support that nomination.
Thank you, Member Noonkamp. Member Anderson?
I'm happy to support Ms. McKloskey as well, and appreciate the stories from, you know, from others that shared as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Anderson. And Ms. McKloskey, I didn't realize that you were actually in the room with us. So you were hiding just behind our Director of Public Works, but again, I just want to thank you for the work that you've done within the city. You know, I've heard you come and speak to the stories during our public comment as well. So just thank you for everything you've done. I think we have a majority of council here that supports your nomination and look forward to, or congratulating you for being this year's Citizen of the Year. So thank you, Ms. McKloskey. All right. Ms. Hinckus, obviously, I think that we've kind of given direction there. So anything else? Thank you, Ms. Hinckus. Moving on to the second agenda item, we have quite, oh, sorry, yeah, let's go. There we go. Thank you for catching me there, Member Russell. Moving on to the second agenda item, it's City Manager Sean Lewis, Deputy City Manager Tim Dodd, Director of Finance Jackie Low, Director of Public Works Victor Rochelle, Director of Parks, Rec, Library and Golf, Christian Underhill, here to talk about the Non-Enterprise Fund Capital Project.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll kick us off while Tim is setting up. As you may recall, at the end of last year's budget and CIP process, Member Noonkamp brought up a struggle that is an age-old struggle with city councils and staff as well, and that is how to prioritize non-enterprise projects, CIP projects that can include streets, parks, recreation facilities, IT projects, information technology projects, and really so much more. And so looking at the different options of ways cities do this, there aren't a lot of great examples, but we did manage to find a few that have really a council and board and commission-driven process. And I really appreciate the work that Tim and the others, Director Low, others on the memo heading, that have worked really hard. So I was able to meet with one of those, a consultant that has worked with a county in Colorado to do this kind of prioritization, get some thoughts on that, bring that back to the leadership team. And then I believe Deputy City Manager Dodd, as well as Director Low, met with a firm that we've worked with before, Stand Tech, which you, as you may remember, has done a lot of work with us on rates and fees and financial analysis. So I'm really pleased with what is before you, but we are open to your suggestions. This is really your process, so please tell us how you would like us to modify this as needed.
Thank you, City Manager Lewis. Go ahead, Deputy City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council, and thank you, City Manager Lewis, for that intro, introduction. So yes, as you pointed out, it's really important to note this was a team approach that, thank you to Director Low for her partnership, as well as for Directors of Departments with several CIPs. So this next slide, I think, is really important because it defines the purpose of why we were doing this. And so we wanted to be systematic, you know, one that's streamlined, that's clear, that's organized, one that's holistic. I think in the past, department, individual departments had done a really fantastic job of scoring CIPs. However, we really want this to be a process that ties back to your strategic plan and your priorities, and is able to weigh a variety of very different projects that are funded by the general fund. And we want to make sure it's based on need, impact, and stated strategic priorities. So the process that we came up with, and I really want to point out, what we really worked on was two things. We worked on a process, and then we also worked on the tool that would be utilized in the process. So I'm first going to go over what that process would look like and who would be involved. So the first would be a department review. So what we're looking to do is to try to, if, you know, based on your input and your feedback tonight, we are looking to try to apply a process, again, based on your feedback tonight, this cycle. As City Manager Lewis mentioned, you know, Director Low and I did meet on Friday with Stand Tech, who we've used for a variety of related services. And so if it's something council would like us to do, one idea we had is that we would run through a cycle with, with a proposal that you would like us to do, and then we may, you know, if you'd like us to, we could, you know, review it by a consultant that could help us understand, you know, what worked and what didn't work after we applied it. So the department review is where it would start. This is something that we have done in past years. It would then go on to a review committee, and this would be new for this year. As you know, several departments, like Public Works, like Parks, Rec, Library and Golf, like IT, have several capital projects every year. Then there's other departments, like maybe the City Attorney's Office, our office, Communications, that really don't usually have CIPs rarely or never. However, they touch everything involving the CIPs. And so what this review committee would do is it would make sure, it would be director-appointed, and it would make sure that every single department had one person at the table reviewing projects. So it would give, you know, Communications, City Attorney's Office, Community Development, every department in the city, you know, an opportunity to review them. It would then go to board and commission review. And what we're proposing for you to consider this evening is that the review would be done by departments and then the review committee, and then the scoring of those reviews would then be made available to the five boards and commissions that are required to review capital projects, to get their feedback. The way we've, and mostly this is a timing issue for this year, that's why we're not proposing that the boards and commissions use that same scoring rubric, really that they just provide feedback based on the scores generated by the review committee and departments. We could certainly change that, but that is the proposal before you. And then finally, it would come back to you for your review, and of course, you have the decision-making authority on this, so it would come back to you for a decision after getting these inputs. The review committee, as I mentioned, would have one member of each department appointed by the director, so could be a variety of different employees. And then the way it would work, again, based on time, is these individual members would be doing scoring individually, but then there would be meetings to, you know, go over the scores together and figure out where things landed collectively. Right now, this is, so now I'm switching to the second part, which is the scoring methodology and the scoring tool. So I do want to, want to give thanks to Jenny Nolan, Tyson Thornburg, and Director Jackie Low in the Finance Department. They already had a scoring rubric developed that was based on best practices and some research data last year. We did make a few tweaks to it. So you see here the categories that we would utilize, and I believe the actual draft tool for you to consider was, and I apologize, allergies have gotten the better of me, so I apologize about that. But I did attach, I believe, the actual tool that we're proposing we consider. And so the, each of these sections does have more detail about what the scoring would look like in the weights. The main, and again, you may not have seen this, as this was done internally in the past, but a major change that we did make was connection to the strategic plan. You know, I think that's, that's something that would, would help us to basically, you know, connect these projects to the priorities that you have set in the strategic plan and components of the strategic plan. And many of these other things are things that you've seen before. So urgency really, I think, obviously, is another really important one that basically, you know, shows, is this something that, you know, legally we're mandated to do? You know, are we under a state law or something that's requiring us to do it by a certain date? Is it a matter of, you know, health, health and safety and well-being of people in the community? So these are the categories that we're proposing and the weights. And then it'll, the timeline, as I mentioned, it would be quite a truncated timeline this year. So, you know, we're looking for feedback tonight, and depending on where you land, or whatever tool we decide to use, we would like to start doing the scoring by departments as early as next week. The review committee would work through May, and then the boards and commissions would also work through May, and then we would come before you with final recommendations in June. And we do have Director Low, who really was my partner in this work here. Thank you, Director Low, for being here for questions, as well as City Manager Lewis, and Director Underhill, and Director Rochelle, if you do have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy City Manager, Member Woodward will kick us off with questions.
Thank you. In your scoring, and let's say at the end, you know, you have two that are tied as far as their total numbers. With urgency being worth 15% there, would, I guess it makes sense to me, and I'm wondering if it makes sense to you, or if you folks have talked about it, is that what you would go to for the tiebreaker?
So that's an incredible question, and one that we actually did not contemplate. So we'd love your feedback on that, if, if we do have ties, if you'd like us to consider that as a criteria for making decisions.
I would, if, I mean, if urgency is something that we need to really highly consider, like we do with, the only one with 15%, so that's my thought. Thank you.
Anyone else want to weigh in on that? Member Russell?
Thank you. My question is, how does this scoring process fit in with the charter requirement that Planning and Zoning Commission has the job of coming forward with the capital projects?
Yeah, so the way that we, great question, thank you, Member Russell, that we included that is through the board and commission review. And so that is when they would have their opportunity that's required by the charter to do their review, as well as the other four boards and commissions that are, that also do reviews of, obviously, as you know, it's P and Z is required, and then BAC obviously also reviews all of them, and then there's three that review projects specific to their areas. So that's where it would live.
So would P and Z have the opportunity to overrule the scoring, or no?
Thank you for the question, Member Russell. The way we've thought of this is even though, you know, P and Z is noted in the charters, you and I have discussed, we really haven't, council hasn't really given us direction in terms of if they want to put more weight on one or the other, because we did codify the Budget Advisory Committee, for example, as a board to review these. So we, we have not attempted to try to rank the importance of those. They would just, what we had talked about, and Tim, Jackie, correct me, are y'all talking about an aggregated board and commission score that would go to council, but also show them the individuals? And then you all could maybe assign a prioritization on that, but at the staff level, that we were not planning on doing that.
Thank you. Member Noonkamp?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation and for this plan. I am so excited. The master plan of the master plans. We are here. This is such an important data point for us to make good decisions and how we steward taxpayer resources in this community. I think it's going to enable us to make more thoughtful decisions, more well-rounded decisions, as we compare all of the city's needs against one another. And I can see how much thoughtfulness and how much hard work has gone into this, so I really appreciate that from staff. A question that I have is, and I think one question that I found challenging in our capital improvement process last year was, every agenda's needs are real, right? Everyone's needs are urgent in their, in their eyes, and as we evaluate needs from different parts of our city against one another, it requires some objectivity. And so is, did you guys consider any kind of like blind scoring in this process? Or how are you thinking about the objectivity of being able to, does urgent maybe mean the same thing to everyone and to every department?
Yeah, great, great question, Member Noonkamp. And so we did try our best to define what these terms mean objectively in the scoring guide. So basically, urgency really, you know, having to come to the level of, you know, is this impacting life and safety of people? Are we out of compliance with the state or federal law? So that was, I think, the first thing that we did was really tried, and again, they're not perfect. I'm sure we're going to catch errors as we apply this that we didn't expect. But our idea was by defining them as, as clearly as we thought we could, that it would hopefully lead to some objectivity. We haven't baked in blind scoring. That is something certainly we could, at your direction, if you'd like us to, consider and add. We, one of the things we have considered, you know, is, you know, would have, like consultants that we mentioned, sometimes they help cities come in and do scoring. I don't know if that's something you'd like us to consider, but that's also an option.
That's really hopeful. Is, have you guys, are you planning to share this with P and Z and the BAC before we go live with it?
Yes, I think the, I think the idea would be after you give direction this evening, that sometime this week, we would communicate through the liaisons of what the process would be, so they could start to schedule time at their main meetings.
Okay. The reason I ask this is, this was also something that BAC brought up in their report last year, is they said, we love being able to weigh in on this. We need a better tool to help us make thoughtful decisions and recommendations. And so maybe even getting some of their feedback on the structure before we press play would be useful. I feel comfortable moving forward with this structure now, knowing that our staff has put so much really thorough and thoughtful time into it, with the acknowledgement of, we can try things, we can iterate, we can get better at them. I'm happy to try this process. If we decide next year, maybe we need to bring in a consultant and make it more robust, I think we can do that as well. But this feels like a really great first bite at the apple. I really appreciate I knew that this was like a quick job to get all of this together. But I think, and I'm hopeful, that this information will really empower us to make thoughtful decisions this year. So thanks so much.
Thank you, Member Noonkamp. Mayor Protam?
As far as the scoring rubric is concerned, there are a couple of things that I might alter on this. I think the biggest one that sticks out to me is service level impact being only 10% of the score. You know, if we look at what the city's mission is, it is to deliver services to the residents. And we do that in part through our capital projects, things like, you know, updating our roads, for instance. So I, that, that I think would be where I would start, if I was giving feedback on what we would change on this. I understand why connection to the strategic plan is weighed so heavily at 20%, obviously because that's what, what should be informing everything we do. But the service level impact at 10%, I'm not sure what we take from in order to get that higher, but that's one of my big priorities as a member of council.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Deputy City Manager, I guess I have a question regarding directors' rating. Can you speak a little bit to the director's rating? Because when I kept looking at it, I was trying to figure out whether or not it also kind of linked up with the service level impact or even urgency. So it kind of felt like we were double-dipping there, but just kind of curious about that one there.
Yes, I don't know if Director Low would want to speak about that, just because it was part of the, the original document that was being utilized internally last year, so we kept it. I think the way I would describe it honestly is the one subjective part. You know, we tried to make this an objective cool tool, but we also wanted to provide an opportunity for directors, for at 5% to subjectively, you know, really determine based on their department needs where, you know, where they feel it would live. But I don't know if you want to address that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have some additional information listed under each category. It's in our capital budgeting software. One thing we're thinking about, one is urgent requests. Also, if this request is about recurring program for maintenance or one-time projects. So next week, when we present the five-year CIP project, we break it down by program, recurring program or one-time. This will help the, give the director the ability to rate with all the priority urgent, recurring projects important, one-time project important, with these two, how they will review these projects. So I would say the detail is further breakdown between all the capital projects.
Director Low, do you mind, if you have any, you were Jenny Nolan. What is the background on the fiscal connection of their projects? I think that was the last question. The item, fiscal connection of other projects, is that what you were describing?
Yeah, for example, project use in our system, we have these three questions listed. For example, is it year-round or provides peak coverage, or between five to 11 months per year, or less than five months per year? So under each one, we have detail for staff member to consider. That's just one example.
Thank you, Director Low. Member Noonkamp?
Thank you. One other thought I had when Director Low was just speaking, that I would like maybe a little bit of clarity on this year in the CIP process, is last year, I think we've, we had some challenges where we were being asked to fund projects, but they were multi-year projects that they needed funding every year, and there wasn't clarity on how we were securing multi-year funding. And if we didn't fund this year, what would we do next year? Or if we funded this year, are we sure we would have the funds for the next year? So maybe that long range, except that it's possible, a little bit more clarity for council about what totally we're committing to, and, and a little bit more certainty about how we think about allocating funds year over year. I know you mentioned programmatic. Sometimes it's not necessarily a program, it's a large project, but it does take multiple years of funding. And so a little bit more clarity on the differences between those projects would be really helpful, in my opinion.
Thank you, Member Noonkamp. Member Anderson?
My question is just regarding the connection to the strategic plan in, in kind of its connection to some of these other items. I know in, you know, in our strategic plan, we have different section on, on, you know, good governance, which I think applies to several, the service level impact, and, um, and of course, we have an economic sec-, you know, economic development section. It does feel like if, you know, for example, um, economic impact and service level impact both kind of apply to the strategic plan as well. It does seem like maybe there is some overlap there and something could get overweighted because it's both in the strategic plan and also applies to some different categories. Have you thought through that, and how would you approach that?
Yeah, thank you. Great question. Um, so yeah, it is a possibility there could be overlap. The way in the tool that Director Lowe mentioned that was attached to your packet, that way described connection to the strategic plan is, um, you had prioritized the seven outcome areas, and so we basically grouped them into tiers. So tier one, I believe, um, you had safety and infra-, infrastructure and transportation. And then tier two, and I may be, um, out of order slightly, but you had economy, community wellbeing, and sustainability. Then the third tier was governance and, um, um, neighborhoods. And so, um, the way we organize the scoring on this is, um, number one, if they connect to one of your top priorities, it would weigh heavier. Um, number two, if it's explicitly mentioned in the strategic plan, it would weigh heavier. So I think, I think by definition, it is possible, to your point, um, that things that you had put in, and staff recommended that you put in the strategic plan were weighted high because of other reasons here. And so, um, yes, we did contemplate that could happen. Um, I think what we considered though is that that would mean that it was something that was a top priority of, of councils based on that ranking, but.
Thank you.
And, uh, Mayor, if I could, I might mention that that ranking came from your retreat two years ago. So mine also be, you know, if, if you want to revisit that ranking in terms of the sections of the strategic plan, because one of the things we even talked about was, should each one of the sections of the strategic plan be given a percentage? And that's when we decided really for simplicity, let's tie it to the strategic plan, and as Tim said, put a weighting within that time.
Thank you for that, City Manager. Actually, another question came up as, uh, came up to me while this discussion was occurring. How do we recognize some of the projects that we know may not be done within a given year? And I, I kind of bring up the example of, I think a couple of years back, Public Works didn't have enough project managers to start all, you know, infrastructure projects that we had within the city. How, is there a way for us to, um, you know, kind of tie that to the scoring as well?
Yeah, we certainly could. So I think, um, to an extent, that also relates to the previous question about, you know, projects that are multi-year. Yeah, that isn't something that's specifically addressed now. I think, I think there are a couple of different ways to handle it. I think one is that it could either be, um, a new category that we add, you know, in terms of is this, um, a project that was unfinished? Or a project that's going to need more time. Um, that's something that we could certainly add if you'd like us to. You know, it could get, we could get more complicated and, and create, you know, a separate scoring tool for multi-year projects, but maybe for the first year, it might be better to just include it as part of the scoring.
Yeah, I'm trying to think back to how, to what a, I guess what I'm kind of trying to identify here is obviously when we're going through this process, and, you know, we, there's always a couple of items where we're just like, you know, we have X amount of dollars, we have these projects lined up. To me, it almost feels like that should be like a determining factor into whether or not we move forward with one or the other. So I think it, I, I don't know if we actually had to add a score to it, or if we just identify these are the projects and what we expect, when we expect these to, to start. So I, I think that's kind of, just having that kind of data point, I think, would help, but, uh, I don't know if we really have to add like a percentage or, um, tie it, tie a, yeah, tie a number to it, so.
Uh, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I think the, the mayor just alluded to this, and, and Member Noonan Camp spoke about it earlier. The, the, the scoring rubric is good and it's helpful in the current year. And what I'm not seeing is the improvements on our year-to-year planning, our, our longer-term planning, our, our five years, our ten-year. How, understanding better how these, does, how the decisions we make this year affect our prospects for next year. Uh, when we commit money for a capital project this year, uh, how do we ensure that that project continues to be funded the next year? If that's not one of the criteria included in our year-to-year scoring. Um, so that would be, uh, another improvement that I would suggest, uh, in the coming years. We might not be able to develop that for this year. But I would like, as we explore our capital improvements and our capital budget, the focus to constantly be on how the decisions we make this year affect us next year, and any subsequent council who might have to come in and make financial decisions next year as well.
Sorry, possibly, Mayor Protem, something we could consider is, um, like, long-term impact this year, you know, is one of the categories that we could add. You know, it could, I mean, we do think it would be helpful for us to engage a consultant if, if we, if you do give us the green light tonight, and we do move forward with this, you know, to help us collect data and, you know, help us understand where we could improve. And that's definitely, I think, a, a challenging one, but a, a critical, right? Because, I mean, as you pointed out, there's multi-year impact to these, so I don't know if that's something that you might want to consider adding this year, or?
I'd, I'd love to have that discussion. However, that ends up getting fleshed out, uh, let's, let's figure it out and, and make it work in the future.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and I'm agreeing with that. Uh, Member Noonan Camp?
On that point, I think one question that came up last year was, are we spending down our CIP funds every year? So that, because we have them and we can spend them on kind of the low-hanging fruit projects, when in reality, maybe we should be storing away for a couple of years to do some really big projects the city really needs, that we can never quite get there for the funding. So this in context of some long-range planning, planning is really helpful for us. And then also to understand what have we already committed to. So for lack of a more elegant phrase, what are we already pot-committed to? And what's left that we can actually spend for the city every year, knowing that we've already made a multi-year commitment on a certain project? That's really helpful for us as well. I'm, again, not sure how we integrate that here. Um, but that is one of the challenges that I know we, we faced pretty significantly last year.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Anyone else?
Anyone, any objections to the current plan, or at least some of the amendments that we have asked for in a sense? Don't see any, any disagreement there? All right, Deputy City Manager, I think, do you have direction for members of council?
Yeah, uh, Mayor, would, sorry, Mayor, would it be okay with you if I just really quickly go down what I heard, just to make sure it's captured correctly? Um, so the first one is, um, using urgency to determine, uh, tiebreakers?
Yeah.
Okay, and then P and Z, right now, keeping it where City Manager Lewis described, but considering where it could maybe better fit in future years, is that? Uh, the P and Z process?
Could you repeat that one?
Yeah, sorry, Mayor. Um, so the P and Z process, Member Russell asked a question about that, and right now it, um, fits into, um, the Board and Commission Review. Um, but we could certainly move it somewhere, or we could certainly consider, you know, based on getting feedback from this, this trial run, where it could fit better.
Yeah, I think my, my response to Member Russell was just the fact that we've never attempted to prioritize which Board and Commission is most important at their ranking. But to Member Russell's point, the charter does mention that Planning and Zoning looks at everything. I believe the charter also mentions the library board will look at libraries. But how would you prioritize that since they're only looking at one section, um, of the CIPs? Um, it's difficult.
Getting feedback from Boards and Commissions, this, you know, before we finalize it, which we'll try to do with some timeline. Service level impact, um, I think Member, uh, Member Protem worried, you consider, you asked about potentially increasing that, is that something?
I didn't hear consensus on that, Tim, so you could probably just set that one aside for now.
Long-range categorization, so not a scoring mechanism, but, um, including information in about, um, you know, projects that it may not be done in a year, need more time. Is that something you'd like to see?
Yep, I see at least four nodding heads, yes.
Okay, yeah, I think that captures most of it, and then, yeah, and then information about understanding what we're already committed to and what's left to spend in future years.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, since we have a few more minutes, can I just interject a, a bit of a process question? So in order for the Boards and Commissions to consider this in, for their May meetings, which you're applying, trying to get every Board and Commission for, to have this on their agenda, I think we've taken care of that. But to make sure we're ready for that, these changes you would really need to see again, right? So would, is there another meeting that we can do a check-in to make sure we've captured these edits?
Yeah, so is the request for Boards and Commissions for them to be able to see this tool at one of their meetings? Because that would, you know, for some of them, they might have, maybe have a meeting left in April, I know B, BAC does. But yeah, is that what you're looking for essentially, is for us to try to bring it to them as soon as possible, then come back to you at a meeting for a check-in, and then apply it with Boards and Commissions in May?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, Deputy City Manager, but aren't, don't we have all the Boards and Commissions part of the CIP next week? So they're going to see it next week, plus we want to have them see that during their May meeting. I'm not sure if the changes that we are asking for need to come back to us, I guess, in a sense. Um, but, go ahead, Deputy City Manager.
Yeah, I was going to say, Mayor, would it be possible then, uh, if you're amenable to having this as part of the discussion you have with Boards and Commissions next week to get there, um, if there's any feedback during that study session?
Yep, I think that that would make sense. Is that good? All right, I think we're in agreement. With no further comments, we will take a break, and we'll meet, uh, back up at seven o'clock to call the meeting to order. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.[113.82][113.82] 111[114.32][114.32] 112[114.82][114.82] 113[115.32][115.32] 114[115.82][115.82] 115[116.32][116.32] 116[116.82][116.82] 117[117.32][117.32] 118[117.82][117.82] 119[118.32][118.32] 120[118.82][120.12] 121[120.62][120.62] 122[121.12][121.12] 123[121.62][121.62] 124[122.12][122.12] 125[122.62][122.62] 126[123.12][123.12] 127[123.62][123.62] 128[124.12][124.12] 129[124.62][124.62] 130[125.12][130.12] 131[130.62][130.62] 132[131.12][131.12] 133[131.62][131.62] 134[132.12][132.12] 135[132.62][132.62] 136[133.12][133.12] 137[133.62][133.62] 138[134.12][134.12] 139[134.62][134.62] 140[135.12][135.12] 141[135.62][135.62] 142[136.12][136.12] 143[136.62][136.62] 144[137.12][137.12] 145[137.62][137.62] 146[138.12][138.12] 147[138.62][138.62] 148[139.12][139.12] 149[139.62][139.62] 150[140.12][140.12] 151[140.62][140.62] 152[141.12][141.12] 153[141.62][141.62] 154[142.12][142.12] 155[142.62][142.62] 156[143.12][143.12] 157[143.62][143.62] 158[144.12][144.12] 159[144.62][144.62] 160[145.12][145.12] 161[145.62][145.62] 162[146.12][146.12] 163[146.62][146.62] 164[147.12][147.12] 165[147.62][147.62] 166[148.12][148.12] 167[148.62][148.62] 168[149.12][149.12] 169[149.62][149.62] 170[149.98][149.98] 171[150.48][150.48] 172[150.98][150.98] 173[151.48][151.48] 174[151.98][151.98] 175[152.48][152.48] 176[152.98][152.98] 177[153.48][153.48] 178[153.98][153.98] 179[154.48][154.48] 180[154.98][154.98] 181[155.48][155.48] 182[155.98][155.98] 183[156.48][156.48] 184[156.98][156.98] 185[157.48][157.48] 186[157.98][157.98] 187[158.48][158.48] 188[158.98][158.98] 189[159.48][159.48] 190[159.98][159.98] 191[160.48][160.48] 192[160.98][160.98] 193[161.48][161.48] 194[161.98][161.98] 195[162.48][162.48] 196[162.98][162.98] 197[163.48][163.48] 198[163.98][163.98] 199[164.48][164.48] 179[164.98][164.98] 176[165.48][165.48] 177[165.98][165.98] 178[166.48][166.48] 179[166.98][166.98] 180[167.48][167.48] 181[167.98][167.98] 182[168.48][168.48] 183[168.98][168.98] 184[169.48][169.48] 185[169.98][169.98] 186[170.48][170.48] 187[170.98][170.98] 188[171.48][171.48] 189[171.98][171.98] 190[172.48][172.48] 191[172.98][172.98] 192[173.48][173.48] 193[173.98][173.98] 194[174.48][174.48] 195[174.98][174.98] 196[175.48][175.48] 197[175.98][175.98] 198[176.48][176.48] 199[176.98][176.98] 200[177.48][177.48] 199[177.98][177.98] 191[178.48][178.48] 191[178.98][178.98] 192[179.48][179.48] 193[179.98][179.98] 194[180.48][180.48] 195[180.98][180.98] 196[181.48][181.48] 197[181.98][181.98] 198[182.48][182.48] 199[182.98][182.98] 200[183.48][183.48] 199[183.98][183.98] 191[184.48][184.48] 191[184.98][184.98] 192[185.48][185.48] 193[185.98][185.98] 194[186.48][186.48] 195[186.98][186.98] 196[187.48][187.48] 197[187.98][187.98] 198[188.48][188.48] 199[188.98][188.98] 200[189.48][189.48] 199[189.98][189.98] 191[190.48][190.48] 191[190.98][190.98] 192[191.48][191.48] 193[191.98][191.98] 194[192.48][192.48] 195[192.98][192.98] 196[193.48][193.48] 197[193.98][193.98] 198[194.48][194.48] 199[194.98][194.98] 200[195.48][195.48] 199[195.98][195.98] 191[196.48][196.48] 191[196.98][196.98] 192[197.48][197.48] 193[197.98][197.98] 194[198.48][198.48] 195[198.98][198.98] 196[199.48][199.48] 197[199.98][199.98] 198[200.48][200.48] 199[200.98][200.98] 200[201.48][201.48] 199[201.98][201.98] 191[202.48][202.48] 191[202.98][202.98] 192[203.48][203.48] 193[203.98][203.98] 194[204.48][204.48] 195[204.98][204.98] 196[205.48][205.48] 197[205.98][205.98] 198[206.48][206.48] 199[206.98][206.98] 200[207.48][207.48] 199[207.98][207.98] 191[208.48][208.48] 191[208.98][208.98] 192[209.48][209.48] 193[209.98][209.98] 194[210.48][210.48] 195[210.98][210.98] 196[211.48][211.48] 197[211.98][211.98] 198[212.48][212.48] 199[212.98][212.98] 200[213.48][213.48] 199[213.98][213.98] 191[214.48][214.48] 191[214.98][214.98] 192[215.48][215.48] 193[215.98][215.98] 194[216.48][216.48] 195[216.98][216.98] 196[217.48][217.48] 197[217.98][217.98] 198[218.48][218.48] 199[218.98][218.98] 200[219.48][219.48] 199[219.98][219.98] 191[220.48][220.48] 191[220.98][220.98] 192[221.48][221.48] 193[221.98][221.98] 194[222.48][222.48] 195[222.98][222.98] 196[223.48][223.48] 197[223.98][223.98] 198[224.48][224.48] 199[224.98][224.98] 200[225.48][225.48] 199[225.98][225.98] 191[226.48][226.48] 191[226.98][226.98] 192[227.48][227.48] 193[227.98][227.98] 194[228.48][228.48] 195[228.98][228.98] 196[229.48][229.48] 197[229.98][229.98] 198[230.48][230.48] 199[230.98][230.98] 200[231.48][231.48] 199[231.98][231.98] 191[232.48][232.48] 191[232.98][232.98] 192[233.48][233.48] 193[233.98][233.98] 194[234.48][234.48] 195[234.98][234.98] 196[235.48][235.48] 197[235.98][235.98] 198[236.48][236.48] 199[236.98][236.98] 200[237.48][237.48] 199[237.98][237.98] 191[238.48][238.48] 191[238.98][238.98] 192[239.48][239.48] 193[239.98][239.98] 194[240.48][240.48] 195[240.98][240.98] 196[241.48][241.48] 197[241.98][241.98] 198[242.48][242.48] 199[242.98][242.98] 200[243.48][243.48] 199[243.98][243.98] 191[244.48][244.48] 191[244.98][244.98] 192[245.48][245.48] 193[245.98][245.98] 194[246.48][246.48] 195[246.98][246.98] 196[247.48][247.48] 197[247.98][247.98] 198[248.48][248.48] 199[248.98][248.98] 200[249.48][249.48] 199[249.98][249.98] 191[250.48][250.48] 191[250.98][250.98] 192[251.48][251.48] 193[251.98][251.98] 194[252.48][252.48] 195[252.98][252.98] 196[253.48][253.48] 197[253.98][253.98] 198[254.48][254.48] 199[254.98][254.98] 200[255.48][255.48] 199[255.98][255.98] 191[256.48][256.48] 191[256.98][256.98] 192[257.48][257.48] 193[257.98][257.98] 194[258.48][258.48] 195[258.98][258.98] 196[259.48][259.48] 197[259.98][259.98] 198[260.48][260.48] 199[260.98][260.98] 200[261.48][261.48] 199[261.98][261.98] 191[262.48][262.48] 191[262.98][262.98] 192[263.48][263.48] 193[263.98][263.98] 194[264.48][264.48] 195[264.98][264.98] 196[265.48][265.48] 197[265.98][265.98] 198[266.48][266.48] 199[266.98][266.98] 200[267.48][267.48] 199[267.98][267.98] 191[268.48][268.48] 191[268.98][268.98] 192[269.48][269.48] 193[269.98][269.98] 194[270.48][270.48] 195[270.98][270.98] 196[271.48][271.48] 197[271.98][271.98] 198[272.48][272.48] 199[272.98][272.98] 200[273.48][273.48] 199[273.98][273.98] 191[274.48][274.48] 191[274.98][274.98] 192[275.48][275.48] 193[275.98][275.98] 194[276.48][276.48] 195[276.98][276.98] 196[277.48][277.48] 197[277.98][277.98] 198[278.48][278.48] 199[278.98][278.98] 200[279.48][279.48] 199[279.98][279.98] 191[280.48][280.48] 191[280.98][280.98] 192[281.48][281.48] 193[281.98][281.98] 194[282.48][282.48] 195[282.98][282.98] 196[283.48][283.48] 197[283.98][283.98] 198[284.48][284.48] 199[284.98][284.98] 200[285.48][285.48] 199[285.98][285.98] 191[286.48][286.48] 191[286.98][286.98] 192[287.48][287.48] 193[287.98][287.98] 194[288.48][288.48] 195[288.98][288.98] 196[289.48][289.48] 197[289.98][289.98] 198[290.48][290.48] 199[290.98][290.98] 200[291.48][291.48] 199[291.98][291.98] 191[292.48][292.48] 191[292.98][292.98] 192[293.48][293.48] 193[293.98][293.98] 194[294.48][294.48] 195[294.98][294.98] 196[295.48][295.48] 197[295.98][295.98] 198[296.48][296.48] 199[296.98][296.98] 200[297.48][297.48] 199[297.98][297.98] 191[298.48][298.48] 191[298.98][298.98] 192[299.48][299.48] 193[299.98][299.98] 194[300.48][300.48] 195[300.98][300.98] 196[301.48][301.48] 197[301.98][301.98] 198[302.48][302.48] 199[302.98][302.98] 200[303.48][303.48] 199[303.98][303.98] 191[304.48][304.48] 191[304.98][304.98] 192[305.48][305.48] 193[305.98][305.98] 194[306.48][306.48] 195[306.98][306.98] 196[307.48][307.48] 197[307.98][307.98] 198[308.48][308.48] 199[308.98][308.98] 200[309.48][309.48] 199[309.98][309.98] 191[310.48][310.48] 191[310.98][310.98] 192[311.48][311.48] 193[311.98][311.98] 194[312.48][312.48] 195[312.98][312.98] 196[313.48][313.48] 197[313.98][313.98] 198[314.48][314.48] 199[314.98][314.98] 200[315.48][315.48] 199[315.98][315.98] 191[316.48][316.48] 191[316.98][316.98] 192[317.48][317.48] 193[317.98][317.98] 194[318.48][318.48] 195[318.98][318.98] 196[319.48][319.48] 197[319.98][319.98] 198[320.48][320.48] 199[320.98][320.98] 200[321.48][321.48] 199[321.98][321.98] 191[322.48][322.48] 191[322.98][322.98] 192[323.48][323.48] 193[323.98][323.98] 194[324.48][324.48] 195[324.98][324.98] 196[325.48][325.48] 197[325.98][325.98] 198[326.48][326.48] 199[326.98][326.98] 200[327.48][327.48] 199[327.98][327.98] 191[328.48][328.48] 191[328.98][328.98] 192[329.48][329.48] 193[329.98][329.98] 194[330.48][330.48] 195[330.98][330.98] 196[331.48][331.48] 197[331.98][331.98] 198[332.48][332.48] 199[332.98][332.98] 200[333.48][333.48] 199[333.98][333.98] 191[334.48][334.48] 191[334.98][334.98] 192[335.48][335.48] 193[335.98][335.98] 194[336.48][336.48] 195[336.98][336.98] 196[337.48][337.48] 197[337.98][337.98] 198[338.48][338.48] 199[338.98][338.98] 200[339.48][339.48] 199[339.98][339.98] 191[340.48][340.48] 191[340.98][340.98] 192[341.48][341.48] 193[341.98][341.98] 194[342.48][342.48] 195[342.98][342.98] 196[343.48][343.48] 197[343.98][343.98] 198[344.48][344.48] 199[344.98][344.98] 200[345.48][345.48] 199[345.98][345.98] 191[346.48][346.48] 191[346.98][346.98] 192[347.48][347.48] 193[347.98][347.98] 194[348.48][348.48] 195[348.98][348.98] 196[349.48][349.48] 197[349.98][349.98] 198[350.48][350.48] 199[350.98][350.98] 200[351.48][351.48] 199[351.98][351.98] 191[352.48][352.48] 191[352.98][352.98] 192[353.48][353.48] 193[353.98][353.98] 194[354.48][354.48] 195[354.98][354.98] 196[355.48][355.48] 197[355.98][355.98] 198[356.48][356.48] 199[356.98][356.98] 200[357.48][357.48] 199[357.98][357.98] 191[358.48][358.48] 191[358.98][358.98] 192[359.48][359.48] 193[359.98][359.98] 194[360.48][360.48] 195[360.98][360.98] 196[361.48][361.48] 197[361.98][361.98] 198[362.48][362.48] 199[362.98][362.98] 200[363.48][363.48] 199[363.98][363.98] 191[364.48][364.48] 191[364.98][364.98] 192[365.48][365.48] 193[365.98][365.98] 194[366.48][366.48] 195[366.98][366.98] 196[367.48][367.48] 197[367.98][367.98] 198[368.48][368.48] 199[368.98][368.98] 200[369.48][369.48] 199[369.98][369.98] 191[370.48][370.48] 191[370.98][370.98] 192[371.48][371.48] 193[371.98][371.98] 194[372.48][372.48] 195[372.98][372.98] 196[373.48][373.48] 197[373.98][373.98] 198[374.48][374.48] 199[374.98][374.98] 200[375.48][375.48] 199[375.98][375.98] 191[376.48][376.48] 191[376.98][376.98] 192[377.48][377.48] 193[377.98][377.98] 194[378.48][378.48] 195[378.98][378.98] 196[379.48][379.48] 197[379.98][379.98] 198[380.48][380.48] 199[380.98][380.98] 200[381.48][381.48] 199[381.98][381.98] 191[382.48][382.48] 191[382.98][382.98] 192[383.48][383.48] 193[383.98][383.98] 194[384.48][384.48] 195[384.98][384.98] 196[385.48][385.48] 197[385.98][385.98] 198[386.48][386.48] 199[386.98][386.98] 200[387.48][387.48] 199[387.98][387.98] 191[388.48][388.48] 191[388.98][388.98] 192[389.48][389.48] 193[389.98][389.98] 194[390.48][390.48] 195[390.98][390.98] 196[391.48][391.48] 197[391.98][391.98] 198[392.48][392.48] 199[392.98][392.98] 200[393.48][393.48] 199[393.98][393.98] 191[394.48][394.48] 191[394.98][394.98] 192[395.48][395.48] 193[395.98][395.98] 194[396.48][396.48] 195[396.98][396.98] 196[397.48][397.48] 197[397.98][397.98] 198[398.48][398.48] 199[398.98][398.98] 200[399.48][399.48] 199[399.98][399.98] 191[400.48][400.48] 191[400.98][400.98] 192[401.48][401.48] 193[401.98][401.98] 194[402.48][402.48] 195[402.98][402.98] 196[403.48][403.48] 197[403.98][403.98] 198[404.48][404.48] 199[404.98][404.98] 200[405.48][405.48] 199[405.98][405.98] 191[406.48][406.48] 191[406.98][406.98] 192[407.48][407.48] 193[407.98][407.98] 194[408.48][408.48] 195[408.98][408.98] 196[409.48][409.48] 197[409.98][409.98] 198[410.48][410.48] 199[410.98][410.98] 200[411.48][411.48] 199[411.98][411.98] 191[412.48][412.48] 191[412.98][412.98] 192[413.48][413.48] 193[413.98][413.98] 194[414.48][414.48] 195[414.98][414.98] 196[415.48][415.48] 197[415.98][415.98] 198[416.48][416.48] 199[416.98][416.98] 200[417.48][417.48] 199[417.98][417.98] 191[418.48][418.48] 191[418.98][418.98] 192[419.48][419.48] 193[419.98][419.98] 194[420.48][420.48] 195[420.98][420.98] 196[421.48][421.48] 197[421.98][421.98] 198[422.48][422.48] 199[422.98][422.98] 200[423.48][423.48] 199[423.98][423.98] 191[424.48][424.48] 191[424.98][424.98] 192[425.48][425.48] 193[425.98][425.98] 194[426.48][426.48] 195[426.98][426.98] 196[427.48][427.48] 197[427.98][427.98] 198[428.48][428.48] 199[428.98][428.98] 200[429.48][429.48] 199[429.98][429.98] 191[430.48][430.48] 191[430.98][430.98] 192[431.48][431.48] 193[431.98][431.98] 194[432.48][432.48] 195[432.98][432.98] 196[433.48][433.48] 197[433.98][433.98] 198[434.48][434.48] 199[434.98][434.98] 200[435.48][435.48] 199[435.98][435.98] 191[436.48][436.48] 191[436.98][436.98] 192[437.48][437.48] 193[437.98][437.98] 194[438.48][438.48] 195[438.98][438.98] 196[439.48][439.48] 197[439.98][439.98] 198[440.48][440.48] 199[440.98][440.98] 200[441.48][441.48] 199[441.98][441.98] 191[442.48][442.48] 191[442.98][442.98] 192[443.48][443.48] 193[443.98][443.98] 194[444.48][444.48] 195[444.98][444.98] 196[445.48][445.48] 197[445.98][445.98] 198[446.48][446.48] 199[446.98][446.98] 200[447.48][447.48] 199[447.98][447.98] 191[448.48][448.48] 191[448.98][448.98] 192[449.48][449.48] 193[449.98][449.98] 194[450.48][450.48] 195[450.98][450.98] 196[451.48][451.48] 197[451.98][451.98] 198[452.48][452.48] 199[452.98][452.98] 200[453.48][453.48] 199[453.98][453.98] 191[454.48][454.48] 191[454.98][454.98] 192[455.48][455.48] 193[455.98][455.98] 194[456.48][456.48] 195[456.98][456.98] 196[457.48][457.48] 197[457.98][457.98] 198[458.48][458.48] 199[458.98][458.98] 200[459.48][459.48] 199[459.98][459.98] 191[460.48][460.48] 191[460.98][460.98] 192[461.48][461.48] 193[461.98][461.98] 194[462.48][462.48] 195[462.98][462.98] 196[463.48][463.48] 197[463.98][463.98] 198[464.48][464.48] 199[464.98][464.98] 200[465.48][465.48] 199[465.98][465.98] 191[466.48][466.48] 191[466.98][466.98] 192[467.48][467.48] 193[467.98][467.98] 194[468.48][468.48] 195[468.98][468.98] 196[469.48][469.48] 197[469.98][469.98] 198[470.48][470.48] 199[470.98][470.98] 200[471.48][471.48] 199[471.98][471.98] 191[472.48][472.48] 191[472.98][472.98] 192[473.48][473.48] 193[473.98][473.98] 194[474.48][474.48] 195[474.98][474.98] 196[475.48][475.48] 197[475.98][475.98] 198[476.48][476.48] 199[476.98][476.98] 200[477.48][477.48] 199[477.98][477.98] 191[478.48][478.48] 191[478.98][478.98] 192[479.48][479.48] 193[479.98][479.98] 194[480.48][480.48] 195[480.98][480.98] 196[481.48][481.48] 197[481.98][481.98] 198[482.48][482.48] 199[482.98][482.98] 200[483.48][483.48] 199[483.98][483.98] 191[484.48][484.48] 191[484.98][484.98] 192[485.48][485.48] 193[485.98][485.98] 194[486.48][486.48] 195[486.98][486.98] 196[487.48][487.48] 197[487.98][487.98] 198[488.48][488.48] 199[488.98][488.98] 200[489.48][489.48] 199[489.98][489.98] 191[490.48][490.48] 191[490.98][490.98] 192[491.48][491.48] 193[491.98][491.98] 194[492.48][492.48] 195[492.98][492.98] 196[493.48][493.48] 197[493.98][493.98] 198[494.48][494.48] 199[494.98][494.98] 200[495.48][495.48] 199[495.98][495.98] 191[496.48][496.48] 191[496.98][496.98] 192[497.48][497.48] 193[497.98][497.98] 194[498.48][498.48] 195[498.98][498.98] 196[499.48][499.48] 197[499.98][499.98] 198[500.48][500.48] 199[500.98][500.98] 200[501.48][501.48] 199[501.98][501.98] 191[502.48][502.48] 191[502.98][502.98] 192[503.48][503.48] 193[503.98][503.98] 194[504.48][504.48] 195[504.98][504.98] 196[505.48][505.48] 197[505.98][505.98] 198[506.48][506.48] 199[506.98][506.98] 200[507.48][507.48] 199[507.98][507.98] 191[508.48][508.48] 191[508.98][508.98] 192[509.48][509.48] 193[509.98][509.98] 194[510.48][510.48] 195[510.98][510.98] 196[511.48][511.48] 197[511.98][511.98] 198[512.48][512.48] 199[512.98][512.98] 200[513.48][513.48] 199[513.98][513.98] 191[514.48][514.48] 191[514.98][514.98] 192[515.48][515.48] 193[515.98][515.98] 194[516.48][516.48] 195[516.98][516.98] 196[517.48][517.48] 197[517.98][517.98] 198[518.48][518.48] 199[518.98][518.98] 200[519.48][519.48] 199[519.98][519.98] 191[520.48][520.48] 191[520.98][520.98] 192[521.48][521.48] 193[521.98][521.98] 194[522.48][522.48] 195[522.98][522.98] 196[523.48][523.48] 197[523.98][523.98] 198
Present.
Member Nunenkamp, present. Member Russell.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Ward.
Present.
Member Wink.
Present.
Member Woodward.
Present.
Mayor Sierra.
Present.
All seven present.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to consideration of the minutes from the previous session, do we have any changes to the minutes from the City Council meeting from April 3rd? Seeing now, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Could we please vote?
Member Anderson.
Aye.
Member Nunenkamp.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ward.
Aye.
Member Wink.
Aye.
Member Woodward.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Let the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item six, we have four items under this, uh, item. If, actually, I'll invite, uh, our city manager Sean Lewis to talk about Elevating Inglewood. Sean, I know that you and your office has envisioned this program and executing in coordination with our partner agencies. Can you give us a little bit background on Elevate Inglewood?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, and just want to say thank you to council. The council has been very supportive of this program, um, since the inception and helped to give some guidance, uh, to us, but really, our, um, partners have been just an incredible asset to us. Um, the Chamber of Commerce was one of the first, um, groups on board. We've had change the trend representing the nonprofit sector. Um, we work with Inglewood Schools, um, who has, um, each of these organizations, by the way, have their own session in this eight-week course. Um, and then we also have Arapaho County that, um, has been a great partner, making sure I got all of those. I believe I did. So, um, we're just really proud of the partnership that this has brought together, the number of individuals. Um, I believe you have a program, the program agenda, the speakers, um, the participants, their bios, and hopefully you'll take some time to read those. Just an outstanding class that we've had this year and just really great partnerships. Um, one of the things that we got feedback on is they would like to maybe have council members come to sessions next year. So the mayor represents you all during the county and city government session, but we'll try to, um, see if you have interest in one of the sessions and invite you to come share your experience, so. Alright, with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, city manager. So yeah, I went ahead and presented. I think it was the same night that, um, our county commissioner, Warren Goldie, was there as well. Got to meet with a lot of the residents that are very passionate about the city, so I thank you for, uh, participating within Engage Inglewood. And obviously, I want to thank the city manager's office for all the work that you put into this. It's, it's a great event and so, or great opportunity to, to meet our, uh, or have our citizens engaged with government, so. I really appreciate that. And so I am going to ask members of council to, uh, join me up in the front of the dais. We will be handing out, uh, we will be, uh, calling each member one by one and we'll take a picture at the end, so. If all members of council, actually, I'll join you as well, so. Krista, if you want to go ahead and read off names, or is it going to be Stephanie?
Yeah, I'm going to read the names.
Alright, perfect.
Okay. Alright. Alright, Amber Darnell. Andy Sivedra. Anthony Charles Pritchard. Ashley Mock. Carl Sanford. Cassandra Mann. Danielle Urban. Ellie Swager. Erin Hildman. Joshua Retsky Stone. Nathan Hawag. Shannon Bowers. Stephen Rudel. Stephen Yates. Stephen Rogers. And Suri Tofinia.
Mayor, I am remiss in mentioning that, uh, Krista Gravy in my office really did the, the yeoman's work on this program, keeping it organized, so I want to thank her as well for her good work.
Not a surprise there either. So Krista, I know, oh, there she is. Thank you for all the work that you put into this program. Thank you very much for all the graduates. Thank you. Alright, we're moving on to the Earth Day proclamation, and I think we have Mel England here. Our sustainability coordinator here to accept the proclamation and sharing information about upcoming Earth Day events, so. Did you want me to read the proclamation first before you speak? Probably makes sense. Alright, whereas on April 22nd, 1970, United States Senator Gaylord Nelson of Wisconsin and Dennis Hayes organized the First Nationwide Day devoted to environmental awareness and education that was celebrated by an estimated 20 million Americans. And whereas this day of environmental awareness and education is celebrated worldwide in some 180 countries with the participation of over 4,000 separate organizations. And whereas individuals and institutions have a mutual responsibility to seek ecological, economical, and ethical choices that enable the world, as well as our individual communities to establish and maintain sustainable societies. And whereas on April 5th, 2021, the Inglewood City Council approved the city's first sustainability plan, which is now a part of the city's strategic plan to maintain a commitment to protecting our environment. And whereas on Saturday, April 22nd, 2023, the city of Inglewood is organizing an event to celebrate Earth Day in the city of Inglewood. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I Othaniel Sierra, Mayor of the city of Inglewood, um, and the city council hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2023 as Earth Day in the city of Inglewood, and encourage all community members to recognize this important day and part, and participate in celebrations, including the city of Inglewood's first Earth Day event. And with that, I'll, uh, let Ms. England say a few words.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and, uh, city council members. So hopefully you all already know, but this Saturday, we have the city's first ever Earth Day celebration in partnership with local business Grow and Gather, um, from 12 to 3 p.m., and it's going to be hosted at Grow and Gather's location. Um, it's going to be a great day. We're going to have live music, a few local, uh, vendors and organizations, an electric vehicle showcase, even a beekeeper, um, and more. And then I also want to say a huge thank you to George Gastis and Emma Meldrum from Grow and Gather, as well as Tony Arnaldi, the city's event supervisor, who just put an immense amount of help and work into this event, so we hope to see you all there.
Thank you very much, Ms. England. And with that, I think we're going to move on to, uh, Small Business Week proclamation. I believe we have Tracy Brumette here to accept the proclamation. Tracy, I'll go through the proclamation before I let you say a few words. Whereas the city of Inglewood, Colorado recognizes and celebrates the role that local businesses and small businesses play in creating local jobs and preserving the character, strength, spirit, and economic vitality of the community. And whereas the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies. And whereas the city of Inglewood supports and joins in this national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best, grow their business, create jobs, and ensure that our communities remain economically vibrant. Now therefore, now therefore be it proclaimed that I Othaniel Sierra, Mayor of the city of Inglewood, and the city council do hereby proclaim April 30th through May 6th as National Small Business Week in Inglewood, Colorado, and encourage community members to support our small businesses this week and throughout the entire year. So, um, Tracy, you're the Board President of the Great, uh, Greater Inglewood Chamber of Commerce and Director of Community Relations for One Good Turn, uh, which is also known as CAPE 180. Uh, Tracy, if there's a few words that you'd like to state?
That one? Ah, it's green. There we go. Thank you, Mayor Sierra and city council members. Yeah, as the President of the Greater Inglewood Chamber of Commerce, we're excited to be promoting and supporting the small businesses of Inglewood, and we will hope that you and the citizens of Inglewood would join us in participating in doing business with Inglewood businesses. And a lot of the businesses in Inglewood are small and, but they've also been here a long time and they bring a lot to the city, so we hope you'll join us in participating in this week to honor them. Thank you.
Ms. Bromlett, thank you very much for that. I actually do have the signed proclamation here, so. Did we lose our photographer? Did Ms. England? Actually, let me just pass it over to you, Ms. I'll come down. Oh, there she is. She's in the back. Alright, and moving on to, I want to make sure I say this correctly, is the United States Marine Corps Memorial Day proclamation. And we do have Paula Sorrels, uh, President of the United States Marine Corps Foundation here with us tonight. Paula Sorrels is a local veterans advocate and past president of the Women's Marine Association, the current president, as I stated, and Ms. Sorrels, uh, no, sorry, there you are. Let me go ahead and just read the proclamation, then I'll have you say a few words. Whereas the United States Marine Corps Memorial was dedicated on August 24th, 1997 by then-Governor Vanderhoof and the commandment of the United States Marine Corps General Louis H. Wilson in a ceremony at the memorial on Sixth Avenue and Colfax Avenue in Golden, Colorado. And whereas the memorial honors all Marines for all time, especially, uh, FMF corpsmen and chaplains, and respectfully remembers all who serve our nation. And whereas the memorial contains a time capsule built by Ball Aerospace and buried on December 22nd, 1976. Marked by the stone on the circle of honor to be opened on the 100th anniversary of the memorial in August 2076. And whereas the USMC, uh, Memorial Foundation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization dedicated to remodeling the United States Marine Corps Memorial and assuming the duties of maintaining the memorial and hosting annual events from the Marine Memorial Association, which did so, uh, since 1977. And whereas the remodel of the memorial will include a visitor veterans, uh, center that will provide assistance, referral services to veterans, a place to gather and share histories, a place for remembrance, and other events, and a place for training for young people to ensure the legacy of honor, courage, and commitment continues. And whereas the USMC Memorial Foundation has brought such distinguished guests to Colorado for the foundation, like Major General James E. Livingston, Medal of Honor recipient, former U.S. Ambassador to South Korea Admiral H., uh, excuse me, Harry B. Harris, Lieutenant General Louis A. Caparota, and I'm sure I missed, uh, misspelled or misstated that name, Major General William F. Mullin, the Third Navy SEAL Commander Rourke Denver, and countless others. And whereas, whereas April 29th, 2023 marks the beginning of significant day of awareness for the United States Marine Corps Memorial and the USMC Memorial Foundation, beginning with a tour by dignitaries from the Marine Corps, the state of Colorado, and the local community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I Othaniel Sierra, Mayor of the city of Inglewood hereby proclaim Saturday, April 29th, 2023 as United States Marine Corps Memorial Day in the city of Inglewood, Colorado.
Thank you. I also have my secretary of the foundation. She's a marine mom and, uh, wife, and, um, has been with me since 2013, working on the memorial and maintaining it. Most people don't know that the, the United States Marine Corps Memorial is in Colorado at the intersection of Sixth and Colfax. It's often thought that the War Memorial in DC is the United States Marine Corps Memorial, but it's not. So, we're here to let the world know that it's here and to remodel it into what it should be, honoring Marines and other services. We have the Walk of Service on the newly new remodel plan that will honor all branches of service, because we all serve together, and we have brothers and sisters that serve in other branches, so. We interviewed over a thousand people to get the design, and that was one of the things that they wanted to honor. So, we do a lot of things out there, but Memorial Day at 2 o'clock and the Friday before Veterans Day, or on Veterans Day, if it's a Saturday, we have a ceremony. We'd love to have you all join us, and we'd love to have you join us on the 29th for our dinner at the Brown Palace. And I think you have the information for that, so. Oh, on May 13th, we have the ride to Remember too, so that'll be fun to, a fun day to be out there. But thank you for the proclamation. We certainly appreciate it.
Excuse me. Thank you, President Sorrels. I do have the information regarding the, uh, evening with the ambassador on April 29th at the Brown Palace. I'll make sure to share with all members of council. And if you would give us the honor, we would love to take a picture of you as well, uh, with you as well, if, uh, if all members of council would like to join me as well, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you to all members of council and to everyone that we just recognized. Uh, moving forward to agenda item seven, this is recognition of scheduled public comment. The deadline to sign up to speak for scheduled public comment is Wednesday by 5 p.m. prior to the meeting through the city clerk's office. This is an opportunity for the public to address city council. There is an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue, and please limit your presentation to five minutes. Uh, I'll just make the same comments as I've stated before, just direct all comments to all members of council, and if you're able to please hold all applause or voicing disagreement during this time, we do want to make sure that we consider all voices during this moment, so. And if, uh, you're unable to do so, you may be escorted out of the city council chambers. So, with that, I'll go ahead and, um, let Rick Emo Heinz, an Inglewood resident here, to address council regarding ADUs. Good evening, Mr. Emo Heinz.
Good evening. Rick Emo Heinz, I live at, uh, La Pan Drive in, uh, Shinango. Good evening, Mayor and members of Inglewood City Council. First of all, I want to thank each and every one of you for your service. I have been following meetings for a number of months now and have truly appreciated the amount of time, effort, and thought each of you devote to our city for its betterment. Whereas we may not agree on everything, I do see that each of you care greatly about this city and want the best for it. I'm here as the first of three speakers representing concerned citizens of Inglewood who would be addressing some aspects of the proposed changes to the status of accessory dwelling units or ADUs currently being considered by the UDC Steering Committee. Each of us will discuss a couple of the areas where we feel that changes, or at least a closer review by city council, needs to be addressed. I will discuss residential lot density and block density, while Matt Crabtree will be discussing onsite ownership, historic preservation, and design cohesion, as well as hearts, beat, heartbeats per bedroom or unit density. And lastly, Stephanie Brooks will be addressing parking issues and short-term rental considerations. First lot density. We believe that the number of accessory dwelling units should be limited to only one per lot in any size or zoned areas. Our rationale is that as far as we have heard and seen from council and UDC Steering Committee, there are no current or proposed studies as to the potential negative effects of increased demand on city services such as water, sewer, police, and fire, ahead of a final vote by council. If there are impact studies that we are unaware of, please let us know. Over the past few months, a number of citizens have come forth with concerns that increasing density in R1 would impact city services. We too feel that increased density through ADU expansion will put added strain on city services, and that multiple ADUs only impact this more. A more measured and controlled approach would be best to test the waters by limiting ADU expansion per lot to gauge the effect of this expansion. Once it is believed that the city can support this added demand, consideration of multiple units per property could proceed. Many cities both in and outside of the state have put similar limitations in place. Denver's recent strategy report from January of this year supports their 2019 Blueprint Denver Land Use and Strategy Plan in stating, quote, "No more than one ADU is allowed per zone lot, and ADUs are not permitted when there is more than one primary structure on the same zone lot," end quote. This sentiment is echoed in Grand Junction and Aspen, as well as cities across the country, including Eugene, Oregon, Flagstaff, Arizona, Chattanooga, Tennessee, and Norfolk, Virginia. Please understand that we are not saying that multiple ADUs are a bad thing. We understand that accessory dwelling units can actively move the needle on increased density and affordability in our city. We feel, however, that this should be done in a gradual way to best assess its impact on the city. Second, block density. Likewise, our group feels that unrestricted allowances of ADUs on any given city block is a negative outcome. Our rationale is that overdevelopment of ADUs as a concentrated, is a concentrated area creates the potential for increased traffic congestion, service demands, parking, and noise issues. As ADUs are rented, higher density means it's a percentage of people in a given block who do not have ownership and permanence in the area can reduce the stability of the area. Neighborhood cohesion and property values could potentially drop in areas where potential principal ownership transitions to a majority rental-based community. This would be an acute outcome. This would be an acute outcome should properties without onsite ownership be allowed also. Boulder Municipal Code has a saturated limit, a saturation limit, rather, which states that, quote, "No more than 20% of the parcels within 300 feet of the proposed ADU property may have an ADU." Density may be a variable factor based upon what a given area can support, as well as the likelihood or not that residents use private or public transportation. We're not necessarily advocating for an on-or-off binary approach to this, but instead, a more surgical and gradual approach to the density of both the lot and the block will result in better understanding of intended and unintended consequences. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Emo Heinz.
Almost got it in this time.
Thank you very much also for providing, uh, some of your notes prior to the meeting. Uh, Member Russell, you have a question?
Thank you. Thank you for your input. I just, I have a question. Did you look at all at the current ADU law that we have in place right now?
We did look at, at what is in, in standing, yes.
Okay. And you're still suggesting that we would move forward? Just be careful.
Okay.
Is that what, is, am I interpreting that correctly?
That, that we limit the ADUs? Is that what you're saying? Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Emo Heinz. Any other questions? Seeing now, Mr. Emo Heinz, thank you very much for your time tonight. Up next is, uh, Mr. Crabtree, an Inglewood resident here to address council regarding residential zoning in ADUs. Good evening, Mr. Crabtree. If you could just state your name and your address, I'd cross read, sir.
Okay. Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and members of city council. My name is Matt Crabtree. I reside on, let's see, I'll say it this way this time, I, Sherman and Cornell. I normally say the block number, that's irrelevant. So, coming back, um, off of, uh, a lot of the comments that, uh, Mr. Emo Heinz had, had made mention of, um, there is a concern with ADUs, uh, expanding from where they currently are. The ordinance as currently written allows the opportunity for people to put ADUs on their property in most areas of the city, and have done so in smaller numbers, but have done so if they needed it. One of the big points in this also, and we shouldn't change, is onsite ownership. We do not want corporations to come in and buy lots of land to build multiple ADUs on a property, and thus effectively reverse any affordability opportunities, as we've seen in a lot of, um, cities and counties across the country, where corporations have come in and had the opportunity to maintain ownership of land. The rationale behind this is onsite allows for issues such as maintenance, property upkeep, and oversight of renters to be more quickly and effectively addressed. Remote ownership can also delay attention to these issues. Likewise, onsite ownership encourages neighborhood cohesion. Next to that is historic preservation and design cohesion. This doesn't necessarily have to apply just to ADUs, but all development as currently proposed going forward. Neighborhood preservation, we have a character to our neighborhoods, a character that we recognize and know of, a density and a scale of our neighborhoods. We should take into consideration the historic character that has built our city and that we've, that we have come to recognize in Inglewood. ADU should consider the same architectural style as possibly the property that, uh, that is being built next to. This includes, but not limited to, building materials, roof design, setbacks, and current bulk plan codes. Now, heartbeats per bedroom, this is an interesting one. Um, I've actually got some information here, um, from Boulder on how they do this. Density per unit should be considered. We do not want a small 600 and change square foot, uh, ADU having seven people in it. The general consensus, I suppose, as it comes from, uh, housing and urban development, is that you have two heartbeats per bedroom. Boulder does this kind of interesting, actually. The principal, this is from the Boulder code, the principal dwelling unit and accessory unit together are considered one dwelling unit for the purposes of determining occupancy requirements. Therefore, the total occupancy of both units shall not exceed the standards set forth in that code. So they basically tie the ADU in with the primary structure. And by the way, Boulder does not allow multiple ADUs, a single ADU, uh, in, uh, in conjunction with the primary property. In summary, as I mentioned at the beginning, the current ADU ordinance has provided the opportunity for those that want to build ADUs in most of the city. I think it functions well as is. Let's not, now that I suppose the conversation- Let's not, now that I suppose the conversation of R1 zoning is done, let's not continue the frustrations, I'll say, in higher density into ADUs now. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Mr. Crabtree, thank you very much for your time tonight. Uh, we'll start with Member Noonikamp and then Member Woodward.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for sharing. Um, I have a question. When, specifically around historic preservation, which I think is incredibly important to our community. The commission that you sit on, the Historic Preservation Commission, recommend, made a recommendation to council for how we can strengthen that. Do you feel that that recommendation actually meets the, the challenges that you're raising here?
Well, I think there's always a conversation that should be made on this and, and to, to continue the motivation for architectural standards. Um, we have made recommendations, both the Inglewood Historic Preservation Society has made recommendations on bulk plane requirements along with the Historic Preservation Commission, yes. So we'd love to have a conversation on this to outline some of the important factors to associate.
But my question is to the, what you recommended previously on historic preservation, do you now see that as insufficient?
I think, well, that's been a while. Um, I, I need to think back to exactly the details of that. Um, I think as is both what the Historic Society provided and what the commission is a good point to work off of, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Member Woodward?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. Question for you on two people per bedroom. If you had a mother, a two-bedroom, a mother and three small children, how would you feel about that?
Mother, two small children, well, and that is an opportunity that certainly exists. And that's what I find interesting with the, uh, the Boulder, the way that Boulder's done it, is they, they define it. And actually, as I didn't get in a whole lot more detail on that, but they define, um, and I want to be very careful because we have, we've had a problem in the past with the unrelated people and the, you know, basically no more than two unrelated, uh, individuals in a household. So there is reference to that in Boulder, and I'm not particularly sure if that's the right way to go. But what they consider is one, how, one home unit which can relate to a mother, a father, and children, um, being allowed in the unit. Um, I would recommend, and I think, I don't think we provided that, but we can provide the example ordinance that Boulder has done on this. And I think that would be, that'd be another option. Um, effectively, there, there needs, I guess the point of my, uh, portion of the presentation was to encourage that there is a limit to the number of people that are allowed to live in these accessory dwelling units if, if allowed.
Okay, thank you. I guess where my question is going is ADU is ideally, maybe I can't.
Keep it to questions, Member Woodward.
My opinion doesn't.
Hey, I was, I was happy to hear what you were having to say.
I'm sure he'll bring it up here, uh, after, uh, public comment, so. Any other questions for members of council? Mr. Crabtree, thank you very much for your presentation tonight. Up next is Stephanie Brooks, an Inglewood resident as well to address council regarding residential zoning and ADUs. Good evening, Ms. Brooks.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm sorry, I have, uh, laryngitis, so I sound like I've been, like, on a bender in Vegas or something.
There's a bug going around.
I know, I know. Um, so, uh,
Ms. Brooks, if you could state your name and your address or cross streets.
Yeah, I'm getting to that. Um, Stephanie Brooks, uh, Hamden and Broadway. Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody, for allowing us to speak tonight. Um, I want to clarify, based on Member Russell's question, we are talking about the proposed changes to ADUs in code next, which, as I understand it, is looking to expand ADUs across all one, R1 zone lots. So that's what we're talking about here. We do know that that it is currently in code for ADUs. Uh, but we just wanted to clarify that. Um, I'm going to be talking about the ADU parking requirements as well as limits on short-term rentals. The former has to do with neighborliness and the latter has to do with affordability. We believe at least one off-street parking space should be required for each ADU and that the city, city should limit short-term rentals for the following reasons. My clock isn't going, by the way. I'll just keep talking, that's cool. Thank you. Many of the BNC zone lots already have limited street frontage. Not requiring off-street parking makes neighborhoods more congested, creating potential safety issues and over-demand. This can lead to the need for on-street parking permits for residents to park near their homes and the added cost to the city of managing those permits. Lack of parking or someone parking in front of your home all the time can cause unnecessary conflict. It's one thing to try to find a spot on an occasional holiday weekend when your neighbor is having a party. It's entirely another thing if you have to get a permit to park on your own block every day. To find solutions, I looked at what other cities are doing with parking and ADUs. Many cities pass parking, phase parking requirements instead of cutting them altogether. When a city does require parking, it is typically one space per unit. Many cities offer incentives to eliminate the requirement such as not using ADU for short-term rental rentals or keeping rent at a lower AMI. Some cities require parking demand studies and waive parking if demand is low.
That you would not be looking at any financial gain or have any alternative motives. Your actions as city council members representing the city of Inglewood and the citizens living here has become questionable, to say the least. Leaving us questioning your integrity. After learning that each of you has taken an oath to only support the Constitution and not defend the Constitution, your integrity will forever be questionable. Your oath of office needs to be reexamined and changed to reflect support and defend the Constitution, not only half of it. Reflecting back to the ADUs and the UDC Steering Committee, the March 7th, 2023 recorded meeting that accidentally eliminated all public comment was quite eye-opening, with members of the UDC not showing confidence in this city council. One thing that was acknowledged was the strong support for the buildings of ADUs in people's backyards and scrapping the rest. It is my understanding allowing ADUs to be used as STRs will add density to our neighborhoods, remove the natural habitat of protected environment assets we freely enjoy. We must also consider the protected statues of certain animals that will be dis- dis-housed when their natural environment has been destroyed to allow someone to have a hotel room or apartment in their backyard. This is a hefty price to pay for someone's profit. To help with their nature, giving them money seems to be a battle cry. In order to build ADUs in short-term rentals, I have heard nothing that protects the neighbors from their privacy being impeded upon. Therefore, I call on city council to make it mandatory that all ADUs have soundproof privacy fencing around them. You never know what kind of a drunk you might get into one of those units outside causing havoc. That all units have mandatory off-street parking available. It's hard enough to find a parking spot. That all renters be required to pass background checks. We never want a child predator to escape into these STRs and into ADUs. Undetected, we must protect our neighborhoods from that, those that could have criminal records from utilizing ADUs and STRs as ways to avoid law enforcement contact. SB 23213 not only allows ADUs and STRs to strive, it removes all local control from the city councils and places all control in the hands of the state. This bill will strip Inglewood of all home rule status and give all control to Jared Polis. The city council member you took an oath to protect our home rule status. Let me remind you and strongly caution you in your decision to support SB 213 or HB 1190. Any council member not in total opposition is in fact violating their oath to the city by allowing home rule to be our, be overridden by the state that any council member does not oppose will be in violation and risking your seat by not supporting home rule.
Mr. Wright, your time is up. Thank you for your comments tonight. Any questions for members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Wright, thank you for your time. Up next is Kim Wright, Inglewood resident here to address council. Good evening, Ms. Wright. If you could state your name and your address or cross streets.
Kim Wright, Tufuson Julian. Guess what I want to talk about? Not ADUs. During a study session, there was a council member that discussed bringing in a land use expert by the name of Randall O'Toole. Council wasn't, shall we say, that approving of this person. Well, I got in contact with Randall O'Toole and he's more than willing to do a town hall. I also got ahold of Natalie Mountain. Last Tuesday, I went to a community meeting in Lakewood and listened to both of them. Now, Natalie Mountain is not a land use expert, but she is an expert in Prop 123 that we've learned kicked off SB 213 and HB 1190. Randall O'Toole is a land use expert. And they had a lot to say last week, so I've contacted them both. They're both willing to do a town hall with city council and all residents of Inglewood and outside of Inglewood if they want to come. And we're setting it up within the next week. So, I'd like to invite council members of, employees of Inglewood, all members, for you to come. I'll be sending out an email and like I said, we're looking at either Tuesday, Thursday, or possibly Saturday for them to be doing this town hall and this is your official invite. Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Wright?
No, that's it.
Any, any questions for Ms. Wright? Ms. Wright, I do have a question. So, it's Tuesday, Thursday, or Saturday? Is it this, this coming week or is it the week after?
This coming because tomorrow, 213 will be on the floor and I'll be making a lot of amendments and stuff. And one thing I do know, I will add since I have a little bit of time, I do know council will be discussing on sending a letter up to the Capitol against 213. I hope you include 1190. We're kind of late to the game on sending something, but better late than ever. And I really do hope you all approve sending that letter that you do not approve 213. So, it will be, we're looking at the dates, we're looking at the 25th, the 29th, which is Saturday, or the 27th.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much, Ms. Wright, for that clarification. With no further questions, Ms. Wright, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
And that concludes scheduled public comment. We're now moving to unscheduled public comments. Same rules apply, but we're limited to three minutes and it looks like we have about 11 speakers here tonight. First up is Mary Colici, here to address council. I guess I should have mentioned this. Mayor Potem will be giving a response to public comment tonight.
Good evening, folks. Thank you for all you do in the city. I just want to say, I'm getting so tired. I'm getting tired of fighting against the A.D.U.
Sorry, before, Ms. Colici, if you could state your name and your address or cross streets.
Um, it is 801 Inglewood Parkway. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much for your time and all you do in the community. I just wanted to say, I wanted to find something really witty to say and I'm just tired of the fight. And so I just figured I'd come because so many people have reached out to me that I know from my community that we're just kind of, we're, we're very tired. And we're tired of the entropy that's been going on. So, I just want to say thank you for all you do and I hope you guys are keeping the community in your thoughts because I have seen so many people reach out to me with different concerns, like, it's, it's just disheartening. That's all I can say. I thank you for your time.
By the way, thank you for your time tonight, Ms. Colici. Any questions from council? Seeing none, Ms. Colici, thank you for your time. Up next is Kurt Supio, I believe, here to address council regarding Code Next. And let me know if I got your last name pronunciation correct.
Can you hear me okay?
I can.
All right. Uh, I'm Kurt Supps. Um, don't, don't sweat the name. It's, nobody ever gets it right, so.
If you could, uh, state your name and your address or cross streets.
I'm, I live real close to University and Dartmouth. So. All right, so today, a group of registered voters in the city of Inglewood filed petitions with the city clerk seeking to recall the following four members of the city council. Anderson.
Mr. Supps, just make sure that your microphone stays on.
If you could turn your mic on. It went off. If you could just press the middle button to make it green? No, not yet. No.
Okay, so, can you hear me now?
We can. We'll restart the clock. All right, members of, members of the public, we'll restart the clock. We'll give Mr. Supps his time.
Okay, I, I apologize. I think I hit the little button right there. My fault.
No, it's okay. Yeah, we'll restart the clock and go ahead, Mr. Supps.
All right, thank you. Let me start over. Today, a group of registered voters in the city of Inglewood filed petitions with the city clerk seeking to recall the following four members of the city council. Councilman Anderson, Councilwoman Nunenkamp, Councilman Sierra, and Councilwoman Wink. I, I don't have time to read each one of the petitions, but I can summarize the issues as follows. We consider these four council members to be derelict in their duties and representing their constituencies for the following reasons. Ignoring legitimate concerns continually raised by Inglewood residents regarding the zoning changes contemplated by Code Next. This includes introducing multiplex housing into R1 neighborhoods and allowing prolific use of ADUs throughout the city along with the favorable short-term rental options. These concerns include, but are not limiting to the following, limited to the following. First, the inadequate infrastructure and financial resources necessary to support increased density. Secondly, the inevitable, obvious, significant, negative economic and environmental impact to both homeowners and renters. Third, irreparable generational damage to the city's established neighborhoods. Fourth, favorable voting for high-density housing projects negatively impacting adjacent neighborhoods. These council members have consistently portended that these changes will somehow preserve and protect the charm and beauty of our city, yet they refuse to conduct importance impact studies including traffic, water, sewage, environmental, child safety, construction, noise, and interference, uh, just to name a few, which would indicate otherwise. Moreover, these council members have failed to address the rampant crime and drug problems that persist in the city. Add to that the concern we have over the issues with fiscal management by this, in the city, all of which contributes to ongoing civic and economic instability. These council members have demonstrated a consistent lack of consideration for the livelihood and opinions of the people they represent, choosing instead to pursue their own personal agendas. We intend to pursue this action vigorously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Supps. Any questions from members of council? Actually, I'll start. Mr. Supps, uh, I appreciate you bringing attention to this. Are you aware that we have not, we've only discussed, we actually haven't passed anything regarding Code Next?
I'm aware of that. I, I understand that. I understand that. But continue, it's the continual pursuit of it and with the ADUs and everything else, so.
So, discussing an item that is a major issue in the city, do you feel we've gone too far with that discussion?
I'm sorry, say that again.
So, a major issue that is occurring within the city is housing, and so you felt we've gone too far with that issue?
Yes.
Today, okay. You've also mentioned some other items in terms of crime, um, you know, financial. There are seven of us that actually pass, you know, our budget as well as make decisions regarding crime. Is there a reason why there's only four of us instead of all seven of us? That are, we act as a body when we pass the budget and we pass, you know, um.
I'm aware of all that.
Yeah, okay.
I'm fully aware.
All right.
We all are.
Thank you, Mr. Supps. Any further questions from members of council? Mr. Supps, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Up next is Ms. Kathleen Bailey, here to address council regarding Code Next. Good evening, Ms. Bailey. If you could state your name and your address or cross streets.
Quick preemptive note before I begin, Stephanie. I will be using the names of three public employees tonight with my critical public comments. And I want to give any council member who has a problem with that to please ask the city attorney now before I begin, rather than interrupting me after I begin. I would appreciate that.
Ms. Bailey, if you could just state the departments and not state actual names, I would be okay with that.
No, I have, they are my employees. I can, I can address, talk, I'm just saying, I'm giving you the option to ask the lawyer. I have a right to say the names of the, I just don't want you to stop me in the middle of speaking. I know I have that right. She's going to say I have that right. If I'm going to curse them or do something gross, then I don't have that right. Naming them, being critical of them, I have that right. They are my public employees. I've been paying their huge salaries for over 30 years. So, if you, you have to ask her if she can tell me to stop.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Bailey. Member Nunenkamp, did you have anything to state?
Certainly. I'm hap, I'm happy to ask the question or ask a question.
Sure.
Um, I do believe that we do have something in our council policies that says that in public comment, we direct comments to all of council and not to individuals. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, my only ask is that we would adhere to our council policies and that we would direct all public comments to council and not to individuals.
Thank you, Member Nunenkamp. Mayor Potem.
I believe the policy actually says individual council members. It doesn't address staff.
Exactly.
Ms. Bailey, give us one second here. Ms., uh, City Attorney Niles.
I'm searching our council policies, but I believe it states that comments shall be directed to the entire council.
Give us one second, Ms. Bailey.
Um, let's see. It says no questions shall be asked of a city council member as an individual. And this is on page 10 of the council policies. All remarks shall be addressed to city council as a body and not to any member directly.
I know the law, so, and that's what she is telling you. So, do you still want to, may I begin?
Thanks, Ms. Bailey, for the clarification. I am fine with continuing on. I think, City Attorney Niles, anything you want to add or? Any, but, any member of council, do they have anyone in disagreement with what Ms. Bailey is proposing to state tonight? I don't see any disagreement or anyone jumping in. Go ahead, Member Nunenkamp.
I'll just say what I've said every time we've ever had a conversation like this, that staff works at the direction of our, of the council. If there is criticism of the city, I think we're more than happy to hear it. I would prefer that criticism be directed at the elected members of the body than at staff. I'm happy to hear our specific issues with, um, specific departments, but my preference would be that uh, we don't, uh, go after our staff and we would keep the comments to directed.
I hear your preference.
Ms. Bailey, give us one. I would agree with that, Member Nunenkamp. Go ahead, Mayor Potem.
Well, I generally have the same opinion. I, I believe we need to follow the law. There's a First Amendment issue here as well as the Inglewood Municipal Code 1-5-2-9C, which says manner of addressing. And, uh, the operative phrase here is all remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. Thereof, in my opinion, being the council.
Exactly.
Which means that you do not get to address individual council members when you are giving public comment according to our municipal code. However, there is no prohibition against addressing specific staff.
They're public employees. You guys are so amazing.
We may not like it. Uh, we may not want to hear it. And we may wish to express support for those staff members who are being a- addressed during the time. I don't know what we're about to hear, so I can't say for sure. But I, I, I think we, it's, it's incredibly problematic to tell Ms. Bailey that she can't do that.
I'm in agreement with that, Mayor Potem. Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Bailey. Sorry for the wait, and you may begin.
Uh, Kathleen Bailey, adjacent and union. I found it profoundly appropriate that in Arapahoe County's statement of opposition to Senate Bill 23-213, found in this meeting's PDF, that they cited what the city of Inglewood is doing as an example of how increasing the number of available housing units does not create affordable housing. And to illustrate this, they included a photo of 4,500 block of a coma where on one side of the street, a single-family home had been scraped and a triplex was built in its place. And each of those units was sold in 2021 for $700,000, while across that, across the street, a single-family home sold for just under 400, just over $400,000 in 2020. And next to that image, Arapahoe County, County wrote the following, quote, "There are multiple examples within Arapahoe County of single-family homes being scraped and replaced with multifamily housing that end up being more expensive than the original single-family homes. For example, the Inglewood example below illustrates that the allowed additional density does not result in less costly outcomes for the residents," unquote. When Brad Power, high-density development and hotel promoter, was first hired a decade ago as director for the community development team of Brooke Bell and John Voberell, they began a targeted intentional campaign against Inglewood's existing blue-collar working-class families whose incomes were considered lower than the calculated average of surrounding areas and whose homes were considered smaller than the surrounding area's average-sized homes. Staff's declared purpose of targeting those communities was to increase sales tax revenues. And their unabashed mantra was, quote, "Inglewood's smaller homes and lower-than-average incomes are deterrents to their goals." And from 2012, 2012 to 2016, Brad Power, Brooke Bell, John Voberell, their planning and zoning commission partners, the CM and Mayor Olson, began developing the Inglewood Forward Comprehensive Plan, actually laying out their planned elimination and buildover of existing citizens' communities while they simultaneously submitted intentional significance strategic amendments, amendments to the existing Title VI laws in order to facilitate and promote their goals that they set out in their Inglewood Forward Com- Plan. In 2016, 2017, the attack on our own unsuspecting citizens began in MUR 3, R2, and R1C and continues to this day. When our Inglewood citizens living in those communities came to seek help from their Inglewood council, they were belittled and ignored as ignorant. And were told what was happening then was happening by law. And yes, indeed, their lives were being destroyed by laws, new amended laws specifically intended to allow that destruction to happen to those specific existing neighborhood, neighborhoods. These are the same laws and same attitudes this council inflicts on Inglewood citizens today. And now the same Brad Power, Brooke Bell, John Voberell, in coordination with planning and zoning commission partners and the latest CM, want to do the same thing in R1.
Ms. Bailey, your time is up. Thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions from, from council? Seeing none, Ms. Bailey, thank you for your time tonight. Up next is Cindy Webb, here to address council regarding City Center and Code Next. Good evening, Ms. Webb. If you could state your name and your address or cross streets.
Can you hear me? Cindy Webb. I live near University in Hampden, and this is my first time to speak to any of you. And thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate it. I was not planning to speak this evening, but this morning I had an experience that prompted me to come and speak with you. Um, I had a doctor's appointment with the retinal surgeon's who, office, which is right across from this building at 850 Inglewood Parkway. And, um, they called me and said that their office was closed due to an environmental problem. And they did not know it when it was going to be reopened. And so they diverted my appointment to another location here in the metro area. I had to go over to Lakewood. And they also have a clinic over in Lone Tree and several others here in the metro area. So, as I went over there this morning, their office was full. Um, I chatted with a couple of the other patients that were sitting in the waiting room. Many of them were people who should have been seen here in Inglewood. But again, they were diverted to their other offices because of an environmental problem. Um, when I saw my physician, I asked him, I said, well, you know, do you know when you're going to be reopening your office here? And he said, well, you know, he didn't know and maybe they wouldn't, and he wasn't sure quite what was going to happen. And as I talked to other people in the office, other patients, um, and as people were leaving, going out to the elevator, it was packed. It was packed. People were saying that they had heard from staff that maybe they were going to move their office down to Cherry Creek, that there had been a break-in to the adjacent office to this clinic and that, uh, it was due to the crime and drug use down here in the Inglewood Cindy Center. And these other people were, they were not from Inglewood that I talked to, but they were nearby Denver people who, this was obviously the closest location for them to come. Uh, and they were just saying, and I was listening, what an undesirable area this was to open a business, to keep a business open because of the crime and the drugs. And I would just call upon you, please, to direct your attention to that. I humbly tell you, I think that's a much bigger problem for this city to overcome than our density issues. You know, the, the trouble with me having a nice backyard is not hurting anyone, but the crime and drugs down here is. It's taking away tax dollars. Those patients out in Lakewood sitting with me could have had their lunches and done some shopping in Inglewood while they were here today had they come to Inglewood today. They didn't. Um, they spent their time somewhere else. So, taxed dollars are being lost. Private businesses are being lost, damaged, I should say. I was here at a study session a few weeks ago. We were talking about how to deal with the contamination in our library and the fact that we were hiring security guards and debating about how many armed security guards we were going to have and how many and what they were going to cost, all of this. It's, I'm sorry, I'm using up my time.
I'm sorry, Ms. White.
It's a problem we need to address, please. I think it's more important than the R1 zoning issues.
Thanks for bringing this to our attention, Ms. Webb. Any questions for Ms. Webb? Go ahead, Member Woodward.
Yeah, I just have one. When you had mentioned environmental, did anybody mention that it's the building that had the environmental?
Everybody's impression was that it was something that had happened due to someone breaking in and doing something. So, I, I don't know. I didn't try to research the building ownership and find out what it was. But everybody had this really negative impression. We don't want to, we'd rather not go to Inglewood because of the crime and the drugs. So, I'm just conveying this to you. And to me, it was disappointing because I live in Inglewood. And I very much wanted to be able to go to the doctor in Inglewood instead of having to drive across town. I should have been able to do that.
Well, I, I asked that because I thought I saw that there was construction going on in that particular building.
I think they're cleaning something up over there.
Okay.
That's the impression I got. And, and they weren't sure whether they would be able to move back in there or whether it would be economically feasible to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Any other questions, uh, Member Woodward? Uh, Ms. Webb, did you say it was 850 Inwood Parkway? I just want to make sure I got the address.
Eight, eight, five, zero.
Perfect.
It's right across the driveway from you here.
Perfect. Ms. Webb, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't see any further questions. Thank you for your time tonight. Up next is Jen Wyper, uh, Wee, Wypert, uh, here to address council. Good evening, Ms. Wyper. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets.
Thank you, Jen Wypert. I'm off of Federal and Bellevue, District Four. So, first I want to say, when, when you were doing your preliminary piece here in your study, at the, I guess it was the beginning of the meeting, my mother was involved in the very first day. I'm all of a sudden nervous. First day, um, it's our Earth Day celebration in 1970. She was a teacher at Arapahoe High School. My mother and my father had bought here in, or rented here in Inglewood in 1956 on Logan and then bought over in District Four on Grand Avenue. And, um, so that came to mind and I wanted to acknowledge her. She's no longer here. But I, I wanted to acknowledge that she had been involved in that. So, why I really wanted to speak tonight was I, I also noticed you had a little form up here that, that said, here's how you weigh things in Inglewood. So much for fiscal, so much for this, so much for that. And I thought, why is the impact on quality of life only 10%? Is that all the council cares about the citizens? The quality of life for the citizens should be a 50%, and then the rest of it, lower. If you don't care about the quality of our life, what are you doing up there, folks? I understand some of those numbers came maybe just as you were getting on council or before, but why are you there if you don't care about the quality of our life? We keep coming in and saying, density at Inglewood is at a maximum now. We're the highest, densest city in Colorado for the size and population, and you keep ignoring it. That's not okay. A lot of you, I believe, are narcissists. You're looking for ways to improve your own financial gain. You aren't looking at what's good for the city. And what Cindy Webb just said is very apparent that we're being overrun by problems in this city that are not being addressed. We've asked you to stop. And you're saying, okay, because Colorado's going to do it, let's not do it. But you know darn well, if they come back, you're going to start doing it again. It's time to stop it. Stop the ADUs. We don't want ADUs. Because people are giving you alternatives doesn't mean we want them. We want it stopped. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wypert. Any questions from members of council? Ms. Wyper, thanks for your time tonight. Up next is, um, Ms. Williamson, yeah, Ms. Williamson, here to talk about STRs. Good evening, Ms. Williamson. If you could state your name and your address or cross streets. If you could state your name and your address or cross streets.
Tammy Williamson, Princeton, Princeton and Washington. And I'm here to talk about STR shenanigans, actually. And just so we're clear, Mr. Woodward, community development is responsible for the implementation and enforcement of Title 16 and the short-term rental ordinance within it, so to a wall. When they are publicly called out for not doing their jobs, they set out to change the code so they can continue enforcing nothing. I am proof of this. I have been doing this for five years, calling them out for not doing their jobs, and they turn around and make it legal. This is the case with them wanting to change the STR ordinance again. They simply don't want to monitor and enforce short-term rental regulations. They say it's too hard. If I can do their job all by myself and find all the illegal short-term rentals and violators, it is not hard at all. Allowing non-owner occupancy and ADUs to be used as motels blows a great, huge hole in the city's fake, "We need more housing" lie. It's called hypocrisy. These things take housing off the market. I challenge you, council, and the city manager, to for once not be a bunch of hypocrites trying to pull the wool over the public's eyes and reject community development's proposal to pick away at this ordinance and to force them, actually, to enforce them. I mean, to force them to enforce existing ordinance. Better still, replace those who have so far failed miserably to enforce and monitor short-term rentals, because the excuses and runarounds and straight-up lies I've been getting are totally unacceptable. Thank you. Oh, and I will accept no more stupid questions. Thanks.
Any questions for Ms. Williamson? Seeing none, Ms. Williamson, thanks for your time tonight. Up next is Koween Dickerson, here to discuss rights. Don't think I saw. There we are.
Oops. I have to get some glasses. I cannot. I need in this. Worst light I've ever had.
Good evening, Ms. Dickerson. If you could state your name and your address or cross streets.
I got to get situated first. I got, everything went kablooey on me. Okay. CN Dickerson. Where am I? Oh, yeah, Bates Logan. On April 3rd, you were reminded your job is to protect the citizens' rights. You have many times over the last four years violated those rights and failed to protect those rights. Whether by a vote of four, five, or six, you have been making very bad decisions, based illogically and unconstitutionally on third-party unelected consultants and personal ideological agendas. A partial list, giving $350,000 to Wellspring Church. That's unethical and unconstitutional. The EV charging station program advanced with no evidence of benefit or facts justifying it. Charter and code changes that are undermining not just our charter, but our status's home rule. The city ditch, historical nature destroyed unnecessarily. Constant attacks on citizens' rights to address council. Promotion and support of R1 rezoning and ADUs under the false flag of affordability and attainability. There is much evidence proving how wrong you are, and it's been brought to your attention, but most of you consistently ignore the truth and evidence and say unconstitutional things like, "The duty to love thy neighbor applies to city government," and excuse incompetence with false praise of the jobs done by staff. Mayor Sierra, you said, "I'm proud of the biogas project." How can you be?
Point of order, the citizen just spoke directly to the mayor.
Stop the clock!
And city attorney, we've asked our citizens to not speak directly to any singular member of council.
Stop the clock! Back it up!
Ms. Dickerson.
Every time.
Thank you, Member Wink. You may proceed, Ms. Dickerson, please.
Back it up! I've lost 30 seconds. Back it up.
Please address all members of council. We'll give you additional time up to 3:20, Ms. Dickerson.
Back it up.
Well, it won't back up. We'll allow you up to 3:20.
How can you be proud of the biogas project? Recent disclosures reveal that everything you published about it is untrue and nowhere close to what you promoted it to be in the citizen magazines. This EV program is even worse. Do you not understand where electricity comes from and CO2 and the necessity of CO2? Where is the evidence that this is necessary or of any benefit? Unless it is to fight the state on the land use takeover and destruction of home rule authority, or restore our local control over our water rights and the water facilities plant and city property, you should do nothing. Undo the damage you have done. Leave our charter alone. Shut down Code Next. Stop wasting taxpayer dollars. Stop making threats and telling us who we can address, when we can address them, and what we say. You said that to me directly in a public meeting after my public comment. "I'm proud of the biogas project." But nothing you published has come true or is even close to accurate.
Anything else, Ms. Dickerson? Any questions from members of council? Ms. Dickerson, since we are going to be voting on the EV project tonight, are you against the EV project as well as the biogas project?
Sorry?
Are you against both the EV project that we're going to be discussing tonight?
I think it's useless, unnecessary, and there are no facts to justify it, and it's a waste of taxpayer dollars.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dickerson, for your time tonight. Any further questions? Don't see, thank you, Ms. Dickerson, for coming and speaking tonight. Up next is Mr. Gary Kozak, here to just address council. Good evening, Mr. Kozak. If you could state your name and your address or cross streets.
Good evening, Gary Kozak, 1260 West Oxford Avenue. And I apologize to the crowd, I had emergency surgery on Monday. I'm here to address the city council on a referendum that I've requested on the SAM's automotive. It's more due to the infrastructure, and that's how it was structured. I could use all the help I can to get additional petitions. Now, I have a real question for the council, okay? When you have a new development, they get to go and only introduce their new development to a small neighborhood. One-tenth to 1% on the voting force is required to be notified, and then you let them say, "Post a couple of signs up here." We couldn't even read the signs unless you stopped and got out of your vehicle because of the color differentiation, okay? So, I had a little problem with that. Why is that? Because when I pulled my referendum, I'm only given 30 days. Now, the referendum states that it's for ordinances, but you guys passed Council Bill In your petitions, I was surprised, but not surprised, on a recall, they get 60 days. Why do I only get 30 days that I'm now required 10% of the population of Inglewood? You're telling me that that little area, because you only have contact, that small area, that that's all that's going to be influenced? That's one of our collector's streets. That's a main street, a main artery coming in Inglewood and going out of Inglewood, okay? And I've gotten all that 10% right around my neighborhood, real easy. I got way more than that. I got 99% of the people in my immediate area that are opposed and wanting to force the city to take another look at the infrastructure, okay? You're requiring me to come up with 10% of the entire voting force, which is 1,644 votes, all right? So, we are expanding and going all the way across the city of Inglewood, but I will say, by law, I believe that I have an argument that I should be allowed on this petition to go ahead and be granted 60 days, and not 30 days. And I'm asking anybody out here that knows people that would help circulate, we're doing very well at it, but because of my emergency surgery and stuff, I've been put backwards a little bit. City council, I know you mean well, but I wouldn't have come here if I didn't think that it was very, very important. Not for me. What do I get to benefit from it? Everybody, when I was on city council, said, "Yo, you're going to benefit by having Oxford and the only one to connect, because it'll make your property worth more." No, I'm more concerned about the people. And Menon Gold's been talking, and they've been testing, running their 18-wheelers all the way around the rec center. God forbid we don't lose some kid crossing the street there, because we didn't bother to go ahead and continue and let him have that driveway.
Mr. Kozak, you're at your time. Thank you very much for coming and speaking tonight. Any questions for members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Kozak, I think your question would be answered tonight, and I wish you a speedy recovery. Thank you for coming. Up next is Marjonne Freeman, here to talk about zoning, I believe. Ms. Freeman here? Oh, there she is. Good evening, Ms. Freeman. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets. And just for members of council, Ms. Freeman did drop off a sheet of paper, and I left it on everyone's desk, so, earlier tonight.
Good evening. I...
All right, if you could state your name, address, and cross streets.
Marjonne Freeman, Fox and Toft. You know, first of all, I want to say thank you to all of you. I know it takes a lot of work to be here. I also, you know, sitting back there, I totally agree with Gary, because for personal purposes, we actually benefit from that, but the question is that the city is going to suffer. And if we come from a space that we're not considering how we expand and how we affect other people, then we're being, all of us be a bunch of narcissists, and we just have a failure. And then also, there is a huge weight on you guys' back. So, I dropped off my paper, and I researched Arapau. All of this stuff that I said before, none of it makes sense. Another discovery that I had is the fact that they are not obligated to any kind of regulations that actually follows the HUD or Affordable Housing, so that makes it even harder. This is just going to be, there's no standard. There's just people going to build these unstable houses, that they're going to fall apart, nobody can afford it except people, so it's just going to be a huge chaos, as you all have been here. But for me, just sitting back, I just wanted to emphasize on something. When you see people, that they come, they're really attacking you guys, I can see that. I can see they're coming from that pain, and I'm pretty sure you guys can see that too. But I admire these people. I mean, look at them, they had surgery, and they show up every time. They have a point. But when you see that they're questioning four members, and when you watch the rest, they ask questions, and then you see certain members don't ask any questions, and so it's just kind of clear that they have an agenda. There is an agenda, because if it wasn't, then you see somebody that is showing a different point of view of what is opposite of what you believe, then it is your obligation to get clarity about what are they trying to communicate with you? Not a single question. And that just shows that either the person is not interested, or the person has already made up their mind. So, for the people that actually can sit back there and just watch you, they're watching you on the videos, I can see why they say that. And I personally admire every single one of you for putting your personal time, but I really think it is the obligation of your responsibility to actually not have an opinion, to actually deliver what people want. And I know you don't get paid for this, and it's just consciously. And when you sit back and you see these people are really miserable, and they really can see that, please, listen to them. That's what your position is. And I thank you for hearing me. I really have a lot of care, and I really appreciate you all.
Thank you for coming and speaking tonight, Ms. Freeman. Any questions for members of council? Seeing none, Ms. Freeman, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Up next is Steve Yates, here to discuss egress, I believe. Good evening, Mr. Yates. If you could state your name and your address or cross streets.
Good evening. My name is Steve Yates. I live in District Two, Floyd and Downing, approximately, okay? So, I might mention a couple of other things before I talk about egress. One, there was a discussion about reviewing if we should have an elected judge or not. I would strongly recommend, don't change the system. You can see how people are kind of upset about things right now. That would just set them over the edge. Plus, you're taking the people's right to speak of who's going to be judging them. The other thing I would say is, if you guys continue with higher density, parking is always going to be an issue, no matter what. One of the things that you could help to reduce some of the street parking would be to separate the carport square footage from the garage square footage, because currently, you know, if you have 500 feet of carport, you only can have 500 feet of garage. So, that's my only suggestion on that. That would help keep cars off the street. Now, the real reason I'm here is for the egress issues, when there was a discussion a few weeks back about buildings being six floors, having a single egress. I don't really think the consultant was being totally upfront with you guys about the building standards in other countries and how it compares. The, there's light construction. Basically, the code rules mean that, you know, you only can go to 60 feet, which basically is four stories, okay? They use timbers, a lot of man-made materials with all sorts of polymers and stuff like that, that as they warm up, they lose cohesion quickly, they catch on fire, things go down, it gets bad quick. And by the way, my background is fire suppression. When we're talking about European buildings, they're built to a much heavier standard. The buildings themselves use larger timbers, they're less likely to catch on fire. If they do catch on fire, the intensity of the flame is not as great. And then the other standard they were talking about is, in countries that didn't even require fire sprinklers, well, those buildings are constructed out of masonry products. Very low fire risk on those. But with the American standards that we use for building and in light construction, even if you put fire sprinklers in there, you're still, in my opinion, increasing the risk of death. In our community, we have already shaped fire code. That's a fire that happened 100 years ago. Do not want to be in NFPA fire code again because of a decision like that. So, please take in consideration this and keep our people safe.
Mr. Yates, thank you very much for your time tonight. Member Anderson, you have a question.
Thank you. Mr. Yates, on the carport and garage issue you mentioned, can you explain what policy you think would be helpful, and you said right now it would be limited to 500 of each? What would be the appropriate policy, in your opinion?
Well, currently, code states that if you, you add up how many square feet you have of carport and how many square feet you have of garage, okay? So, if you're doing the ADUs, you're going to have garage and ADU, okay? So, the garage is going to take up 600 square feet. So, bare minimum, that's parking two Hyundai's, small Hyundai's in the garage, okay? That gives you 400 square feet for a carport, which is not really enough for any vehicles, additional vehicles that may be coming onto the property. So, I'd say, make your garages, you know, the garage-ADU combo, you know, the thousand square feet. I actually think garaging and ADU is separate in the code, but, you know, garage is the thousand square feet, which also fits into fire code, current fire code. And then the carport could be up to 800 or 1,000 square feet, which is basically a two-and-a-half-car, three-car garage. And since we mostly have alleys, people who park in the alleys, it's not really changing the character of the neighborhood up front. It's making our alleys... It's making our alleys become more useful to the community, because people will now go in there and park their cars off-street versus on-street and causing the additional clutter, in my opinion.
So, you would suggest eighteen hundred square foot total for garage and carport?
I'm gonna leave that up for you guys to figure out. You're the policymakers, even though I've been there. You guys are the ones that are dealing with the daily-
Just wanted to get your idea on that.
Yeah, I mean, eighteen hundred square feet probably would be fair in that. But here again, it's up to you guys to make that decision. Thank you.
Mr. Yates, actually, I'm gonna, if you would, if I would, ah, I'm gonna ask you about the single egress, single stair conversation that we had. So I kind of looked into this as well. So, if we were to move in that direction, we would have to change the building material then, right? For fire suppressing-
Well, part of the fire suppression would have to change from the standpoint of concealed spaces would need to be covered. That would help with the cheaper materials that are used. But here again, once a fire like that gets going, it's bad. I mean, you've seen what happens to these stick construction, you know, during the construction phase, how quickly they go up. Now granted, you do have rock on the walls that will reduce the spread, but it's not a good situation. The other part of it, too, is if you have, I think Steve made the comment about an active shooter type of situation, that keeps people from being able to come up and help individuals. The other thing is if you've got people in that building who are disabled, meaning walkers, or needs help like that, they're trying to come down these stairs to begin with. Now you've got emergency services coming up with hoses or with gurneys or whatever. You're throwing a lot of action, two-way traffic going opposite directions on the same stairs. Elevators typically in a fire situation are shut off. They're not used. Fire department can use them if they choose to, but they're not used because that's just, it's a jet tube is what it is. You know, if you start getting a fire in there, it just acts like a rocket, okay? And then if they have a power outage and somebody's inside of that elevator and there's fire, you've got another issue. Now granted, there are sprinklers in that elevator shaft. It's just not a, it's not a good choice for the way we building in the United States.
Mr. Yates, I think you answered my question. I think you covered it in detail. But no, I appreciate your insight on this, obviously with your line of work, so. Do appreciate that. Any further questions for members of council? Seeing none, Councilman, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, have a good evening.
And last on the list, I believe it's Andy Savadre. Savadra, Savadre, how do you say it? Savadra. Is Andy... Don't think I see him. All right, and I think if I don't see Andy, then I, that does conclude unscheduled public comment. Do we have anyone online? City Clerk? Nope, all right. I will pass it over to the Mayor Pro Tem to provide a response.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everybody who came out for public comment tonight. I'll just go through this list, piece by piece. To the folks who spoke about ADUs, Mr. Immelheinz, Mr. Crabtree, Ms. Brooks, and Mr. Wright, I want to thank you for the constructive feedback you're giving us. Mr. Immelheinz, I know you're working with a group of people who are very interested in shaping whatever does happen in the community, as opposed to just pumping the brakes and saying, stop, don't do this, giving us constructive solutions, things that we can do. It's helpful to me personally to hear examples of what other municipalities are doing, although I would never be interested in shaping this city like Boulder, for instance. That's not to say that Boulder never does anything that makes sense. So it's helpful to hear that. Mr. Wright, you know, you and I have talked a number of times personally. You're one of my constituents in District Four, and I believe I understand a lot of what you're saying and a lot of your concern. I just, I'm concerned by some of the comments. First of all, when anybody questions our integrity, oftentimes, folks look at the seven people on this dais as something other than fellow residents and citizens of the city. It's a job requirement. You don't get this job unless you care about this city and unless you live in this city and unless you vote in this city. It's one of the fundamental requirements of the job. And so, while we all have different opinions on what happens in the city and what should happen in the city, I think, again, constructive engagement is important. It's difficult to listen to people attack our character personally. And when that does happen, it makes it even more difficult for us as human beings to hear what those people are saying to us. So, I would urge some caution for some folks who shared things with us that were less than flattering or personally chose to question our integrity or our tendency to listen to folks in office. It's, I understand the frustration. I've felt it myself in the past, which is one of the reasons why I'm sitting here today. It's just really difficult and I would look forward to a time when we can express our differences of opinion in a more constructive manner without attacking one another, recognizing that people can hold differing policy stances in good faith. Mrs. Wright, I want to thank you for organizing the town hall with Mr. O'Toole and Ms. Menton. I don't believe that this body had much of an appetite for doing that. I could be mistaken on that. It was one of the suggestions that came up after we heard the discussion about point access blocks. But I would look forward to potentially attending one of those. I believe I'm available most of those dates. I may have a schedule conflict on the twenty-ninth, so I hope it's not a Saturday. And then, moving on, Ms. Coletti, I wasn't certain that I've quite captured exactly what the specific concern was. I'm guessing it's about development. And like I said earlier, development is a controversial issue in our city and it's a point of contention for a lot of people in our town right now. I'm personally, you know, divided with a number of my peers on this dais about how the city develops going forward. But there is certainly great demand for a plan going forward on how we develop, and we're in the process, as the mayor made reference to, of working through that now. Hopefully, we can come to an agreement on how we proceed into the future for the city. Let's see here. Mr. Supps is next up on the list. I will withhold any comments on the recall. I don't think that's appropriate from the dais. But I do understand the concerns with the code next process. Ms. Bailey, we can talk at a later time. I understand your feelings about community development and about some of the things going on there and about the comprehensive plan, and we should sit down again sometime soon. So, email me and we'll figure out when we can do that. Ms. Webb, it's, your comments are timely, actually. I looked, I checked my emails, and we received a request from Colorado Retina Specialists sometime in mid-February. That's the doctor's office that's in the city center. And we have done our best to restore law and order in this building. And we're working on spreading that outside of the immediate envelope. For me, I think one of the primary goals was to make sure that this building, the City Hall, the seat of government for the City of Inglewood, was the place where law and order ruled the day. And I think our security contractor has done a great job of assisting us with that, and we're proceeding. As development continues in the city center and we talk about the future of the city center and we look at transferring the property from the Inglewood Environmental Foundation back to the City of Inglewood, I think we will see some more progress on the restoration of order. I also think that sometimes when you focus on one area, like we have under this roof, it has a tendency to affect the surrounding area, because a lot of the problem moves to other places. So, I've been talking to the city manager from time to time, trying to figure out how we can be more present in the community and how we can better serve the public safety needs in the community. And I expect that conversation to be ongoing in the future. And I'm grateful to have an example that we can bring forward of some consequences when things don't go as well as we would like. Let me see here. Sorry, Ms. Wipert. Interesting to hear about your mom and Earth Day. And I, again, the comments, I took down a couple of quotes. You don't care about the quality of our life. A lot of you are narcissists. I find those damaging. It's hurtful personally, it's harmful to us, and I just don't think that it moves the discussion in the direction that you would like it to go or that any of us would like it to go. And I know the six people that I work with, and I don't believe that any of them are narcissists. And I look myself in the mirror every day and I'd like to think I'm not a narcissist, but gee, if I am, I hope my wife will tell me. And as someone who has to live in this city, I do care about the quality of our life. All of us, every resident in the city. Ms. Williamson, again, expressing frustrations about community development and short-term rentals. This is something that I've been focused on over the last several months. I hope that everybody saw that. We, I've worked with the city attorney and this body has worked with the city attorney to craft a new piece of legislation that did not come out of community development. It came out in cooperation with community development, but it came from the city attorney's office and it was designed to specifically address a lot of the issues that we've had with short-term rentals, specifically enforcement. One of the provisions in that is the ability for us to charge actual rental provider sites, the facilitators in the market, for listing and illegal listing. Another is a requirement to list the licensing. We've done dozens of things in that bill to ensure that the city's rights are protected in the course of the short-term rental process. And I believe that we will see great improvement in the short-term rental regulation and enforcement in the next year because of this. And if we don't, well, I'll be back at it, I guarantee you that. And Ms. Dickerson, I don't have any additional comments for you. I understand your frustration. I think, as I said earlier, good faith people can possess different policy decisions, and I think that's what you and I encounter from time to time, is we just have a different idea about what good public policy is. Mr. Kozak, if you're in here, I think he may have stepped out. The referendum is the way to handle this. I have to say, I'm proud of you. I cast a vote for the Sam's Automotive Development, and I did it. I explained it at the time. I did it because I felt that was what my legal obligation was. As citizens, because that's done by ordinance, the people have a right to challenge that decision, and that's what's happening right now. There was one specific question, which was, why do I only get thirty days to obtain sign-off on a referendum? And the answer to that question is very simple. Charter forty-seven. Charter forty-seven specifies the referendum process and has not been modified according to the Muni Code site since November of 2001. That predates any of the current council membership. Again, we're facing a question. Do we have a problem with this thirty-day window? Would we prefer a sixty-day window? We had one resident who spoke up tonight and told us, don't change our charter. So, I have two residents now who are giving me conflicting pieces of information. One of them says, I want sixty days, that's a charter requirement. The other one says, don't touch the charter. Here's the dilemma of doing this job. So, those are helpful pieces of information. It's something that I would look at. I'm big on fundamental democratic rights. The right to direct democracy is something that I value deeply, particularly on a local level, because sometimes the body does step in poop and the citizens need an opportunity to tell us that we have. Ms. Freeman, similarly to what I've said already, delivering what the people want, the challenge there is the group of people here tonight are not the only residents that I deal with on a day-to-day basis or that anybody else deals with. We get emails, we get phone calls, we take meetings, we talk to stakeholders of various types, and we get different information from them. Ultimately, what the people do is they elect us to exercise our best judgment. And my hope is that if I decide to continue doing this job into another election cycle, the people will have sufficient faith in the fact that I've made more good decisions than I have bad decisions and decide to retain me. That's why anybody runs for office. And lastly, Mr. Yates, thank you very much for your time tonight. Always good to have information from an expert. I would like to hear more about building standards, how they differ. We had a very brief discussion with one person who had one opinion, and I think as we go talk continually about our building and development code, the more expert voices we can hear of differing opinions, the more we benefit. So, thank you, everybody, for your patience as I went through that list. I appreciate it, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, you take good notes. Member Noonan Camp?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a council request. Can staff please follow up with Colorado Retina? I appreciate Ms. Webb bringing this issue to our attention. I know staff met with them on February twenty-first, but I would like a follow-up to address that concern. Thank you.
Actually, Member Noonan Camp, is that a Colorado Retina or is that a property management question? What do we normally speak to about?
Well, Colorado Retina has reached out to the city in the past. We've met with them directly, so I would like a direct follow-up, maybe in addition to the property management.
The meeting that we had was with Colorado Retina directly. However, Ellen Ar, which is the property, their manager, was involved in discussions and is aware of what's going on.
Maybe we meet with both of them then, but I think a follow-up based on today's activity would be helpful.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I just have one more brief question, or one more brief comment.
Thank you. Are you all done, Member Noonan Camp?
Yes.
All right, Mayor Pro Tem, and then I'll go to Member Russell afterward.
That's in regards to questions. It was brought up that oftentimes people speak to us and we don't ask any questions. I don't ask questions. The reason why I don't ask questions is because I don't have any. Oftentimes, people come up and they speak very clearly. They tell us exactly what they want. They tell us why they want it. They tell us whether or not they think we're doing a good job. If I don't have a question, it's not an opportunity, the question-answer period is not an opportunity to engage in dialogue. I'm not gonna make one up or make a statement in the form of a question so that I can extend the time that the person is up here or get my point across. I'm following the rules. So, sometimes the simplest explanation is the best. Oftentimes, we don't ask questions because we don't have any.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Member Russell?
Thank you. I echo Councilmember Noonan Camp's question to them. I think it's important for us to know. And I also think it's, I really kind of thought about this also. I think council needs to start looking into this, because even when we had the problem with the methamphetamines in the restrooms, the businesses in the City of Inglewood, not just around here, but around the entire city, have been dealing with the same thing. And the bottom line is council needs to address that because it is impacting our sales tax revenue and the safety of citizens. So, I would like that. Then I just, I have one other council request. And my request is, is the community room or Hampton Hall available either on Tuesday evening four-twenty-five or Thursday evening four-twenty-seven? Or are either of them available on April twenty-ninth at one o'clock in the afternoon? I would like for council to provide the room for the neighborhood meeting. So if we could get that information back, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Anyone else? Seeing none, that concludes unscheduled public comment or public comment overall. Take a break? Let's take a ten-minute break and come back at nine o'clock exactly. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. Members of council, if you could please be seated. All right, thank you, everyone. We are now back. Moving on to item 9, I see that we have just one agenda, or one consent agenda item to remove, which was 9C2. Any other items to remove? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve 9B1 and 9C1?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, could I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Let the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you. For 9C2, this is a slurry seal project. We have Capitol Projects Engineer Devin Keener, and I believe, Member Russell, you may have a question off our Director of Public Works. Good evening, Director Raphael.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I just have a few questions. So is it possible that any streets in Zone 1 will need more significant repair work than what the slurry seal would do? And if that is discovered during the course of work, will A1 chip seal be able to perform the additional work?
Yes, council member, so a couple of items there. Great questions. Yes, we do anticipate there are roads outside of the scope that need more significant work. We do the slurry seal based on the condition index, generally around a range of 50 to 70, so the right treatment at the right time for the condition of the roadway. With respect to your question about additional work that may be found to do the slurry seal, we did build in an amount of patchwork in the bid, so that if they come across patchwork or conditions that need to be patched before, you put that top slurry coat on there that is already covered inside the bid document.
So did you evaluate most of the streets to see if there were any that needed? And will they be bid out separately, or are they included in A1 chip seals bid?
So streets that need additional improvements beyond, or if their condition index has dropped below that, they're not eligible for that? So we are currently looking at a millin overlay for Zone 1 in 2024, and of course, we'll continue to make repairs until we get to that point.
Okay. And so is that, is that the way you're doing it, really? Is you do the slurry seal one year, so in case they find more, then you would be able to add that to the millin overlay the following year?
Correct. And we rotate through the zones of the city with the various applications for pavement treatment.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further questions for our director? Member Woodward?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. The slurry seal that was done south of Oxford, west of Broadway, east of Clarkson, I think it was last year, maybe the year before, it has held up really, really well, and it was almost like an overlay. I mean, it was that good. And I think we have the same contractor that we're looking at here, but I know I'm in that area a whole lot, and I just can't get over it almost every time I'm there. So I like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Woodward, you went out of order, but I'm going to give you a hard time about it. Can I get a motion to approve 9C2 with no further questions?
I move to approve 9C2.
Thank you, Member Russell, could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any further comments? Seeing none, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show, seven ayes.
Director, thank you for your time. Up next is 1181, which is Council Bowl 21 Amendment Inglewood Municipal Code Regarding Short-Term Rentals. We have City Attorney Tamara Niles. Good evening, City Attorney. Is it not in the same place as all the other microphones? There we go.
Just had to get a little forceful with it, I think.
Really? Wow, okay, good to know. I keep telling you, it's like right in the middle, but no, I guess not.
This is finally the culmination of many a study session and discussion, one-on-one with council and other impacted parties regarding our short-term rental regulations. So tonight, as a, incorporating the suggestions council made at the last study session, and proposing a few others that I think may be a compromise when you disagreed, we are proposing a new ordinance. So of course, you've been very involved in this revision process. It's been a joint effort between my office and the Community Development Department. I've also spent a significant amount of time reviewing ordinances and fee structures from cities and counties across Colorado to try to see what works for some people, what doesn't seem to work, and how we can implement those for a more robust system of regulation here in the city. So, and what I will go through tonight is some discussion that we had at the last study session, and how we incorporated that into the draft currently in the packet. So we had a discussion regarding whether an owner can be an LLC. And I did write it, based on the majority direction, I think, from the study session, that an owner can be an LLC. However, all members of the LLC must sign the application as an owner. The property must be actually occupied by at least one of the owners, at least 185 days per year, and an owner must be 18 or older. And if anyone wants to weigh in, please don't hesitate to interrupt. I have children, I'm used to being interrupted all the time, it doesn't, it all interrupts my flow. So also, the proposed revision before you states that if it is legally impossible to provide the multiple forms of identification that the ordinance requires, they must prove that it is legally impossible through an appeal. Now, what we discussed at the meeting, at the study session, was through the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. However, we already have an appeals process through the licensing officer, because this isn't exactly land use, it's more proving legal impossibility for documentation. I felt that it was more appropriate to go through our licensing officer appeal, rather than schedule a public hearing and an appeal with the Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
Go ahead, Member Russell.
So what would be legally impossible? Do you have an example of being legally impossible to prove the home address?
Well, we actually brainstormed in our office about what could possibly, how could somebody not have a vehicle registration, which if you don't have a vehicle? And what if maybe you are not documented to be in the US, in which case, maybe you don't have a driver's license? Maybe they're hesitant to try to go get an ID or something like that. But they still live here, they still have trouble paying for their house, and so they do want to pursue short-term rental.
Do, I mean, normally, they need a green card, correct? To, is that all need to be working here?
Immigration law is not at all an area of expertise, but yes, it is my understanding that you are supposed to be, receive some sort of legal recognition to legally work in the US. However, I also know there are people that have not received that and aren't here working.
Right. So do we anticipate having any of these reasons come forward?
I don't, I don't have a specific, a specific person that I know of. However, I try to draft an ordinance so that it has the longest likelihood of requiring amendment. So we try to think of what's every possibility, so we don't have to come back to council and say, well, actually, this person just woke up from a coma, and so they don't have a car, and they don't have an ID, or something, I don't know. I try to write an ordinance so that we don't have to come back to council for that, but then it still provides oversight. They still have to approve that they can't produce these documents, too, in a hearing setting. So to me, that was a good compromise. It seems like whenever we draft a rule, there always comes up with an exception, so I've learned this from experience. And I've had to bring ordinances back to council to include an exception for something that I didn't ever anticipate could occur.
Okay. I appreciate that. I guess one of my only concerns is leaving a decision like that in a hand of, is it a city employee, or is it just somebody that we hire to do the licensing?
And the licensing officer is a city employee. And the licensing officer is a city employee. Um, generally, it's the finance director, or in this case, it could be the Community Development Director. The licensing officer is designated by the city manager. Now, if there's an appeal, that would could be to a hearing officer that is an independent third party.
Okay. All right. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, City Attorney.
Okay. Um, we also have um, the parking spaces. Somebody raised that in public comment. Um, and we did write that um, originally, the ordinance stated that it had to have um, one um, paved parking spot per bedroom. And two of those parking spots can be on the street, but the rest have to be on the private property. Per our discussion at the study session, we changed paved to permanent, in case somebody had a gravel parking spot or something like that, that's on the property. Uh, we also added the um, application license fees. And I listed what we proposed in the study session. Uh, and then I did some research and found out exactly what our current short-term rental fees are. Six hundred for the first year and five hundred for each renewal year. And of course, during the study session, felt that it was a large majority that thought the proposal was too high. So we have changed that. Um, we would propose instead seven hundred dollars for the first year, which is half of what we had originally proposed, um, which would be a five hundred dollar application fee and a two hundred dollar license fee. So this would just be an increase of one hundred dollars um, of what we currently charge. And it's to compensate our staff time for going through all of these um, new requirements, confirming it, really tracking it down, um, independently confirming that somebody's not um, being untruthful in their application. Uh, and then we would propose five hundred dollars each renewal year. That's what we currently charge. And when I say what we currently charge, of course, we had also required the hotel motel license. So that's the same comprehensive fee. We've allocated it a little bit differently, because we thought requiring two licenses for the same thing was perhaps inappropriate, perhaps not legally enforceable. Uh, and so, so it is the same cost, but it's allocated a little bit different. But it it doesn't propose an increase.
Member Russell?
Um, I just have a question. On page twenty, uh, under short-term rental license fees, they did not get changed. Um, so it says, short-term rental license, new application fee, renewal of expired license fee is five hundred dollars. I don't, that may be correct. The next one is short-term rental license fee, both new and renewal is two hundred dollars. So are those supposed to be changed, or are those something different than what we're talking about?
Uh, let me grab my laptop. I, that's where I have the agenda.
All right.
Page three fifteen of the packet.
Um, luckily, Eric Sampson from Community Development is here. Um, uh, yes, that renewal um, application fee should be amended to three hundred dollars to be a five hundred dollar total. And I apologize, that was my error completely. Got it right in the PowerPoint.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, City Attorney.
Uh, and then we have some questions about taxation of current short-term rentals at the um, study session. And so um, the cost of the tax license that every business must pay in the city, that's not changed. And then we also provided in here exactly what the taxes are on short-term rentals. That's not changed in the ordinance, which is why we didn't have that um, ready at the study session. But they currently pay a sales use tax of three point eight percent, like all city businesses, lodging tax of two percent. So just like a hotel motel, all um, commercial lodging providers. And so we don't propose any change to that.
Thank you very much, City Attorney. Any further questions for our City Attorney? Go ahead, Member Russell. Uh, you're reaching, so.
Well, I don't think I have any questions for the City Attorney. I probably, I have some questions for council, so.
Okay, um, yeah, let's go ahead and make a motion. Can I get a motion to approve? What do I do with it? Eleven A one.
Move to approve eleven A one?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Member, okay, I got it. Member Noonan Camp, could I get a second? Thank you, Member Wink. And now discussion. Go ahead, Member Russell, when you're ready.
Thank you. I actually am very appreciative of most of these changes. I believe it's tightening up the ordinance quite a bit. The only concern that I have is allowing um, ADUs to be short-term rentals. And I am very concerned that once we allow ADUs to be short-term rentals, we will be eliminating a section of affordable housing. Um, because three or four years ago, when we were talking about the original ordinance, um, when you're making it like for um, a mother-in-law apartment or your children that can't afford to live somewhere, um, then it becomes more affordable housing. But once you start using it as a short-term rental, people can make a lot of money, just like Mr. Wright shared tonight in the fact that somebody was pulling in twenty-four thousand dollars um, for their short-term rental. Um, and and so I don't, uh, I really would like to amend this to remove uh, ADUs from being short-term rentals.
Thank you, Member Russell. Did you want to make the official motion? I could take that as the official motion.
All right. I would, yes. It's on page ten. It is um, the number is five dash thirty-one dash forty-five A. Um, and it's on page ten.
Okay, so it's a motion to amend to remove ADUs as part of STRs.
Yes, thank you.
Could I get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Any discussion? Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
I'm actually supportive of the change to allow ADUs to be used as a short-term rental, uh, for two primary reasons. First of all, our current code allows a homeowner to live in the ADU and rent the house. I don't see a substantive difference between that and living in the house and renting the ADU. Uh, and because of that, I'm supportive of allowing ADUs to be utilized as short-term rentals. Secondly, um, to Member Russell's point about the effects that ADU short-term rentals have on the housing market and housing affordability, I think we miss one component of housing affordability, which is when I buy a house and I either put in a short-term rental on it, or I buy a house with a short-term rental, uh, the income from that short-term rental increases my own ability to afford the house I just bought. Uh, so there is an element of affordability here for the owners who own the properties. Um, and under, under that reasoning and logic, I believe that it, I'm comfortable with the change as proposed. Uh, I I will be voting against the amendment.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Member Noonan Camp?
Thank you, and thank you, Member Russell, for bringing forward the amendment. I also respectfully need to vote against it. And I actually agree with Member Russell. I would prefer to have ADUs have long-term affordable renters in them. I would, I think it's good for our housing market. I think it's good for our community. It's good, I think, builds stronger neighborhoods instead of pushing people to big box apartments. Um, but unfortunately, we've had an ADU ordinance on the books in this city for several years now, and very few people have built them. It's not helping our affordable housing market currently. And I think that opening up this opportunity for someone to maybe a little bit more easily recoup their investment in this and then potentially transition that to a long-term rental, and we have better odds doing it this way than what we've been doing so far. Because I think we probably can agree what we've been doing so far isn't working very well. Um, and so I see this as a, as an attractive carrot to home builders and homeowners, and uh, that's why I unfortunately can't support the amendment, but I appreciate it.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Uh, Member Anderson?
I won't be supporting this amendment either, and for many of the same reasons my colleagues have just stated. I would just add that just because something, an ADU becomes a short-term rental, um, shortly after it's built, for example, um, that may just be a temporary thing. I know through, you know, over the course of a life of any dwelling unit, any residential structure, they will go through many different changes. And the one advantage that um, short-term rental has is it changes the economics of being able to add those to a property and makes it more, makes it more possible for that person to build one. And then it could go on to, after it's been a short-term rental for some years, gets paid off, could become housing for elderly parents or for um, a low-income family or something like that. And that's what I think is the the big advantage of this, is it does um, allow to get more uh, more ADUs into into Inglewood so that we can reap the benefits of them.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Uh, Member Russell?
I would respectfully disagree with that position, because who it's going to benefit are developers that will buy the property and scrape the the house and then build a new house and an ADU. So I believe that um, it is more, um, it it's going to impact the affordability of the houses in the neighborhood totally. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem?
I'll just point out, Member Russell, that under this code, the owner has to live in the house. They can't STR both the house and the ADU. They have to live on-premise. So whoever buys it, regardless of who built it, whoever buys it will be living there. They'll be residents of the city. It's not just being used commercially as a, as a rental.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I'll weigh in. For all the same reasons, or everything was spoken in terms of why I would be opposing this amendment tonight. Uh, so yeah, I I don't want to put a limitation on how ADUs could be used, uh, which is, I guess, the point that was made earlier, that we want to get more ADUs into the city. So I'll be voting against that amendment. So. Uh, Member Woodward, I see your lights on.
Yeah, I, first off, I just want some clarity. There was amendment to the, to this document. That's what you're saying you're not voting for.
Correct. The the current amendment on the table is to remove, to remove ADUs as STRs.
Okay. I will be voting um, on the amendment to get, to get rid of the STRs here. I'm not a fan of STRs, STRs to begin with. I wasn't here when it passed, so. However, the im, the main, well, the amendment, I won't, I will be uh, supporting that amendment that uh, Councilmember Russell brought up. Because I I am, I am still not in, I will be supporting the main one also, because it's already in place or because the STR situation. And I don't see that changing, so that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Member Woodward. All right, with no further comments, and we go ahead and vote on the motion to amend to not allow ADUs as STRs.
All right, Member Anderson?
Nay.
Member Noonan Camp?
Nay.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ward?
Nay.
Member Wink?
Nay.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Nay.
Let the record show five nays and two ayes. The two ayes are Russell and Wink. Oh, I'm sorry, Russell and Woodward.
Thank you for that, City Clerk. Any other amendments? See none. Can we get, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Uh, I'm actually opposed to the administrative appeal process. Uh, I believe that any deviation from the standard regulations in this process, which are quite tight, should be overseen by actual residents of the city of Inglewood, which our Board of Adjustment and Appeals is required uh, to be. Um, I looked through Charter sixty just a moment ago to see what the duties of the Board of Adjustment and Appeals are. And I don't see how this exactly fits under their charter duties, but they do handle appeals for our short-term rental licensing right now. And I think that duty properly fits with them. So I would propose an amendment to change back to the original text where the Board of Adjustment and Appeals handles any uh, deviation from the licensing requirements uh, due to an inability to provide proof of residency documents.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Russell. Any comments? Go ahead, uh, Member Noonan Camp.
Would Mayor Pro Tem Ward mind reading the charter section for us? That you just got away from? Thank you.
Yeah, it's Charter sixty, Powers and Duties of the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. And the relevant portion is, "The board shall have the power to hear and determine appeals from refusal of building permits, make special exceptions to the terms of the zoning regulations in harmony with their general purpose and intent, authorize variances from the strict application of regulations in such situations, and subject to the limitations as may be set by ordinance. The findings and decisions of the board shall be final, subject only to judicial review."
Member Noonan Camp?
I just have a question for the City Attorney on this. Do you have any legal concern?
Uh, no, it's, it's workable. Um, but I had reviewed the same charter section, and then I had reviewed our licensing code that has appeals to the licensing officer already built in. I thought it was more consistent with our current regulatory mechanism to appeal to the licensing officer, because it didn't quite fit into the BOAA's other duties. But legally, it's perfectly fine. It's, there's no issue sending this to BOAA instead. Thank you.
Any further comments? Actually, I I think I will be voting for this amendment, just because I, just for the sake of consistency. So I think that it kind of just makes sense, and so I will be in favor of this amendment, so. And with that, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. Any further amendments? See none? Any discussion regarding the motion on table as amended? See none? Oh, go ahead. Mayor Pro Tem?
Uh, let's see, Member Russell, I think, beat me to the punch, but.
All right, I'll, I'll start with you, Member Russell.
Um, I, I do appreciate this ordinance. I believe it has buttoned up everything really tight. But I cannot support this, because I do not believe that um, making ADUs STRs is going to be in the best interest of the city. So I will be, be voting no on this amendment. Thank you. I mean, on the, on the ordinance.
Yep, got it. Thank you, Member Russell. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, I appreciate Member Russell's perspective on that. Uh, we have a short-term rental process in place, and this does change that process. But overall, I'm confident, uh, after all the work that we've done over many months and uh, some citizen engagement uh, relative to the process, trying to locate flaws and issues that we've had in the past, that we have a package here that allows us to effectively enforce the laws in place and to ensure that we chase SCOTF laws away from our city, and we teach them a lesson that makes them not want to come back and commit subsequent SCOTF lottery, or whatever the word is. Um, so uh, I'm grateful to see this coming forward. Uh, even with the uh, ADU provision, I think the ADU provision makes sense. Um, as I said earlier, and I won't belabor my point on that. Uh, so I'll, I'm happy to vote for this tonight.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Member Wink?
Thank you, Mayor. I I simply want to take another moment to to thank the City Attorney for her work on this um, initiative. One of the chief pieces I, well, one of several pieces I was interested in seeing during my terms, term in office, was um, that we modernize and and make more accurate our, our guiding principles in whatever of the formats they exist. And so I know what went into this to some extent, and just, I know the the value, right? We can see a certain amount of the value that we get from just your taking this on the way you have and um, presenting us with this final copy, so thank you.
All right, see no further comments. Can we please vote? Can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Mayor Pro Tem Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes and one nay, the one nay being Councilmember Russell.
Thank you very much, City Clerk, and thank you very much, City Attorney. Moving up uh, to eleven C one, which is the EV Action Plan, we have uh, Sustainability Coordinator Melissa England. Welcome back, Ms. England.
Um, hi, everyone. Hello, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am here tonight really just to field any lingering questions for the draft electric vehicle action plan. Um, since the last time we were here, not much has really changed um, from the plan. Those changes, um, however, are that we did correct the goal of increasing uh, multi-family chargers. The baseline was incorrect, as I stated last time, so we updated that to the correct one of five percent, which you can find on you can find on page thirty-one. We also added public comment, which you can find on page thirty-four, and then we also added in a page regarding EV batteries, production, social impacts, lifespan, and recycling that has been added into the appendix um on pages forty-one to forty-three. Um, public comment was really positive, and I think that really just goes to show kind of the process that went in behind this plan. This was very much Inglewood resident and stakeholder-led throughout the entire time. So I'm happy to field any questions you all have. I'm also um here, just like last time, with Deputy Director of Operations and Maintenance in Public Works, Chris Edelstein, and then I believe on the line um is Lynn Jemison, who is the facilitator and Project Coordinator from the Excel Partners in Energy side, and also Liz Gardner, who is the Area Manager for um Community and Local Government Affairs from Excel.
Thank you very much, Ms. England. Um, any questions for Ms. England? Member Russell?
Yes, thank you um for the presentation. I, I guess I have a little bit of concern about the outreach to the public because in um, in the outreach communications, it looks like it was mostly, um, it says um city staff, uh, community development representatives, and code enforcement, Inglewood Downtown Development Authority, Sustainability Commission, nonprofit partner Drive Electric Colorado, Inglewood Business Community, Assistant Director of Electrification and Energy at the Colorado Department of Transportation, Colorado State University, Excel Energies Partners in Energy. The focus groups were Inglewood Public Schools, which I'm assuming is teachers, developers, Swedish Hospital, and Craig. I don't really see any average citizens in any of the lists that I saw in here, and that is a little bit problematic to me.
Yeah, thank you so much for that question. Um, so the Sustainability Commission member that is a resident, and also um it's kind of exciting that the person from the uh State Energy Office for Innovative Transportation, he has a very long title, I can't remember it. He's actually an Inglewood resident, and he requested to be on the uh Planning Committee as well. Um, we made extra effort to make sure that we did an in-person event to hear from Inglewood residents, really to get their feedback. We also had the Inglewood Engage page open um for months, actually, for residents to give their feedback. We included that feedback in the plan. Um, and then we had the Inglewood Business Thought Co-op that also went out, and that was open to any Inglewood business that wanted to come um and present. So we really tried to make sure there was ample effort with the community and outreach to them.
Okay, thank you.
Member Noonan Camp?
Thank you so much for bringing this forward to us. Uh, excited to see this move forward. One question I have is around the multi-family, the hundred percent uh goal, and we're also having kind of a parallel conversation around our building code and what kind of EV-ready, EV-capable standards we want to include in that. How do you see those two goals dovetailing together? Does that support us reaching that goal, or is this goal going to be met with the, actually, in the plan, there's existing outreach also?
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question. Um, one of the things that kind of stuck out to me, at least in the focus groups with developers, was that they said um kind of the EV infrastructure is kind of just the way that the market is going. So we really see that this is just kind of like an organic, natural process that's going to be happening, um, at least on our end. The helpful thing with the map to see that a hundred percent um within, I believe it's a, a fourth mile or three-fourth mile from multi-family, is just making sure that we get that um equity focus, that those who can't charge at home are able to at least in a, in a proper manner. I do think they're probably just naturally going to pop up, and I do think it complements probably future plans really well with the city.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to approve eleven C one? Thank you, Member Wink. Your mic is off, but I got you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Any further comments? Uh, Member Russell?
Thank you. I, I have some huge problems with this. On page four in the plan itself, under population, it says, "Inglewood is home to more than thirty-three thousand residents in over fifteen thousand households. The median household income is sixty-six thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which is lower than the state median of seventy-five thousand two thirty-one. Just over twelve percent of residents live below the poverty level. Lower median household incomes mean that until the used EV market drops, the upfront cost of a new EV may be a barrier to adoption. It will be important to promote electric mobility options, EV leasing options, financial incentives, and lower fuel maintenance costs of EVs when engaging the community on EV adop- adoption. Even our own report says the average citizen in Inglewood cannot afford new EVs as the price is today, and yet we are in the city saying we are elitist because we are going to institute this, and it is not what the citizens in Inglewood can afford. I'm not saying this is not the future, but I'm telling you, we do not have the s- infrastructure to support EV, and for the city to dictate this, I believe is reprehensible because the average citizen in Inglewood, even according to your own report, cannot afford electric vehicles. So I will not be supporting this."
Thank you, Member Russell. Uh, Member Anderson?
I have a, a question for Member Russell. Is there, is the, you're, uh, I'm trying to understand your comments. Are you concerned that this EV plan mandates that people would purchase EVs? Residents?
No, my, my concern is that we would spend taxpayer dollars for a program that most citizens in Inglewood cannot afford. I'm not saying no one can afford this, but the average citizen in Inglewood cannot afford this, and I do not believe it's sustainable. We don't have sustainable batteries at this point. The infra- we need to buy the materials from out of the country because we're not producing them in America, and, and I'm just saying, this is not a wise thing to move forward with right now. That's basically what I'm saying. Thank you.
Anything else, Member Anderson? Member Noonan Camp?
Because, Member, uh, Russell brought up the financial question. When I'm reading the financial implications in the council communication, I do believe actually that we're not spending taxpayer resources on writing this program. Can you clarify for that? Clarify that for us, uh, Senator England, especially around what being part of the Excel program? Can you clarify for us, uh, the support we're also getting from Excel, and what cost is the city actually incurring through taxpayer dollars?
Yeah, so the support from Excel is completely free, so the implementation. Um, the only really quote-unquote cost to us would just be staff time for education and awareness. Um, and then for the chargers, there's a lot of grant funding coming, coming in and rebates, so that would be kind of TBD at this moment.
Okay, thank you.
And then I would like to just, if it's okay, have um one additional comment. New used, I mean, new EVs, they do uh pose a financial barrier. You can find used EVs um for as low as like fifteen thousand dollars, and that's a twenty-fifteen. Um, they are coming down pretty dramatically over time, but new EVs, definitely, they do um show a cost barrier.
Can I ask a question? So um, a used EV, a twenty-fifteen EV vehi- vehicle, how long of the battery life is left in that, and how much does it cost to replace all the batteries in that vehicle?
Yeah, great question. Thank you for that. Um, they're showing that batteries could last between ten um to even twenty years in some, um, some suggestions, um, but there is a federal regulation that they're, the batteries are under warranty for eight years and a hundred thousand miles.
How many miles?
A hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. England, thank you very much for all the work you did on this uh EV Action Plan, including um all the partners that supported you in this. I am in favor of this uh action plan. I love the fact that we're kind of moving in the right direction in terms of just providing uh EV charging station as well as just providing a plan overall for the city. So I do appreciate all the work that you put into this, so thank you. Uh, Member Anderson?
I'll just make one more comment. I do think that, that this, this is a, a well-put-together plan. Um, I, 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 I do think that there is a need to allow for some charging systems and, and for, in, within our city for electric vehicles, and this moves in that direction. That being said, when it comes time, you know, for actually expending funds on something, I want to look at those projects, you know, specifically and say, is this something Inglewood actually needs and can't afford? Is it the best use of our resources? So to me, that's the real, the real difference is, is it's all, it's all in the implementation. Um, and so that's kind of where I'll be, I'll be drawing my considerations.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I'm on the fence about this plan. I think the thing that gives me pause is something that we've talked about on this council before, and I've been outvoted a number of times on, which is the uh updates to the building code. Um, to me, it feels like uh similar to what Member Russell was saying, we're charging a tax upfront to people who may or may not be interested in the product that we support. Um, and, and I just have, I have reservations about that, but given that this is only one fork of the plan, and you know, I have the right to vote for or against any particular policy uh decision, I, I don't know that that's sufficient to kill the rest of the plan. Um, I think electric vehicles, we're being told are the future. The technology is developing. Uh, it'll be interesting to see how much of the supply is in ten years. Um, but I, I don't think my hesitation is strong enough to, to cause me to cast a no vote tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. With no further comments, uh, Member Woodward?
Yeah, I, I'm going to be supporting this tonight also. Uh, I know the price points with anything new start out high, and they start coming down. And excuse me, I just saw a headline, I believe it was today or it was yesterday, about somebody coming out with thirty thousand dollar EVs. And you know, I believe that's going to happen, that, you know, the certain ones, Tesla's kind of, you know, the, this, the starter of all this, but as GM and Ford competition is going to bring it up, and, and I think we're going to be seeing by twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five, most gas cars gone. And if we don't have chargers, we have a problem. We have a big problem, so I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Member Russell?
Thank you. It, it did remind me uh of a question that I have. So um, City Attorney, if, if we approve these charging stations, I've seen where some cars have blown up or caught on fire in a charging station, um, will the city bear any responsibility in that?
Simply approving a charging station would not subject us to liability. Um, what could subject us to liability is if we um knowingly do something that causes those to explode. For example, if we, the city staff member wires them improperly or something, then we could potentially have liability if we knew or should have known of the defect, but ultimately, no, simply approving it does not create liability for us.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, I see no further comments. Can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Mayor Protem Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes and one nay, the one nay being Councilmember Russell.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. And Ms. England, I actually still have the proclamation that I signed earlier today, so, for urte, so I'm not sure if you want it or, or not, but there we go. Thank you again, Ms. England. Have a good evening. Um, moving on to eleven C two, which is a resolution opposing Senate Bill uh twenty-three-two thirteen statewide land use and zoning present uh preemptions, uh Deputy City Manager Tim Dodd?
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything you want to add?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I don't have a presentation. This is a follow-up to the, I believe it was Mayor Member's Choice at the end of last meeting um about consideration of taking action on this. So um there is a memo that describes uh the bill um and some of the points and contained in it. Uh, there's also a draft of resolution for your consideration, uh, the full text of the bill, including a summary, um, and then also information from the Colorado Municipal League, and then there was also a few links to other cities in the metro area that have taken uh this position.
Thank you very much. Um, Deputy uh City Manager Dodd, any, any questions from council? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to approve eleven C two?
I would like to make a motion to approve eleven C two.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Russell. Any further comments? Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
Sure. Thank you so much for bringing this up. This is obviously an incredibly important conversation in our state right now and an important conversation that we've been having in Inglewood. Um, and as I, as I shared last week, my position from last week remains unchanged. I wish that we were coming to the table with solutions of how to make this bill better. Uh, that, I will say on the record and emphatically, I do not support this bill in its current form, but I also do believe that um whether we like it or not, it's going to pass, and I would like Inglewood to be part of the solution, and I would prefer that we take an amend position and bring our ideas. I'm working with our state legislators on the changes that I would like to see in this bill. I have some grave concerns about what's in it now. I think that we have um a strong history in this country and in this, or in this state of local control. There's a lot in here that is challenging, but I do personally think that we should be taking an amend position, and so for that, I can't support this resolution tonight, but I will continue to uh fix what I see as problems in this bill.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Member Anderson?
I'm in a similar position as Member Noonan Camp. I um, I have problems with the bill, not only, you know, um, with some of the aspects of the land use, but also some of the contract preemptions that come into play with regards to um the disallowance for private property owners to enter into um, enter into contracts to uh put covenants on their property and form HOAs. It's an anti um, uh, anti-freedom of free association, I believe. Um, with that particular point, I think this does not represent an incremental approach, but I do think it's prudent to um, to look for a way to amend this bill, uh, to enter into that conversation. I, I don't support it the way it currently is, and I am concerned about the local control. I think that's a really important issue as well. And, and I know some have raised, uh, raised concerns that, that, that um by voting no on this particular resolution would be a violation of some oath of office or something like that. I understand, you know, where people are coming from of that, but honestly, I went back and I read the, I read the Colorado Constitution several times, um, and I just can't figure out how that would be a violation of my oath of office. And so while I um certainly don't support the Senate bill, I think we should be taking an amendment, amend position, and I um will be voting against this resolution tonight.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Member Woodward?
I will, uh, I'll be supporting the resolution, and I don't think we should take an amended position. It's, to me, it's home rule, which i- is just way overstepping. The state is way overstepping on this, and that's the main issue. Before I even get into the rest of the bill, I don't, do not support the state doing this to local municipalities. The county, most of the cities, if not all of the cities in the county, Rappahoe County, are supporting uh a resolution similar to ours, and I keep hearing about amending it, but I don't hear about amending home rule. I mean, I don't, I don't hear anybody talking about that, and so therefore I will not vote for, or I will vote for this resolution.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Member Russell?
Thank you. Um, I will be supporting this resolution also, and I believe if you happen to be taking the stance of amending this, you are not sitting on the state legislature. You are sitting on the Inglewood City Council, and I would like to remind you of that, and it is our job to represent what is in the best interest of the citizens, and so I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Mayor Protem?
I'll support this too. I, I'm sympathetic to Member Anderson's comments about the Constitution. I'll point out that the section of the Colorado Constitution that covers home rule specifically is Article twenty, Section six. It, I just downloaded it. It contains two pages of text and forty-five pages of case law. Forty-five pages. Forty-five pages of case law. So the courts have weighed in a variety of ways on home rule, and I suspect they will here as well. Uh, personally, I'd like to see this bill killed, uh, but I believe there's probably a future discussion about how the city of Inglewood feels about, uh, the inevitable litigation that will occur, should this bill pass.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Member Wink?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I also want to, to thank my colleagues for all their, their viewpoints. Um, and I haven't said very much on this in the last many meetings, but I, I cannot quite get to a point where I, I see us getting what we want by the amendment, but moving in that direction. And in principle, it makes every bit of sense to me. And so, um, I would rather vote tonight with Member Woodward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Member Wink. I guess I will chime in. I will be supporting the resolution as well. Um, obviously, we've been having discussions, uh, about, uh, potential, you know, regarding Code Next in terms of just, uh, modifications to our land use. Um, and so now having that first, uh, having that perspective that we received from our constituents regarding some of the proposals we have, made me kind of wonder whether or not, it made me question whether or not this is, this, whether this bill is now, uh, a bill for, intended for last resort. And what I mean by that is, I know exactly what it is that we should be looking to do within Inglewood in order to, um, increase density in the right areas. But from the state perspective, it seems to be they're providing this blanket statement that all cities should be doing something exactly the same, and I just don't agree with that. Um, I, I do want to take an amend position in one fashion or another. Kind of what you were speaking to, Member Woodward, I would really like for us to amend and keep home rule, keep local control, and continue to have discussions in terms of how we increase affordability and attainability within the city. Um, and, you know, continue to having those conversations with the state. Can they help us provide a carrot, provide a stick in order to receive or to get more development within the city? And part of the discussions that we had around city center was, we were told that we may not be able to get anything over like, uh, six floors within the city. So if, if, if there's restrictions or if there's reasons why we're not able to do that, I would love the state to come in and help us get more than six floors. Uh, provide that carrot in order for developers to actually do something within city center and not really affect the R1 areas. So I, I guess that's what I'm hoping to come from this. But since it, you know, I think this is more of a nuanced conversation, and we should be having more of an amend position, but without having that, I think, uh, I would just be in favor of just moving forward with the resolution as stated and, and go from there. But I'm hoping that we could continue having conversations with the state for something that makes more sense for Inglewood, regardless of which way it goes. Uh, I'm not convinced that it's gonna pass, but, you know, it is what it is, but. Um, and with that, any further comments? Seeing none, can we go ahead and please vote?
Member Anderson?
Nay.
Member Noonan Camp?
Nay.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show five ayes and two nays, the two nays being Councilmember Anderson and Councilmember Noonan Camp.
Thank you very much, City Clerk, and that moves us to general discussion and mayor's choice. I think I have a couple of items for tonight. Uh, first off, I, I do want to congratulate our community development team, uh, for recognition, they won another Governor's Award for Downtown Excellence from the Downtown Colorado Inc. at their annual meeting in Loveland last week, I believe. And so, uh, this is the second year in a row that they've been recognized for, uh, the work within the Economic Development Strategic Plan. So I just want to congratulate Brad Power, everyone within his staff. Um, it's a prestigious, prestigious award that has happened back-to-back years. So can't thank them enough for all the work that they put into this. And, um, obviously it weighs, uh, or it says good things about, you know, moving forward in terms of what we're looking to do within city center. So I appreciate, and, well, in Inglewood overall. So I appreciate all the work that they put into this, and congratulations to Brad Power and his team. Um, secondly, I want to say that there was another item that, that I have, but if not, um, the one thing I did want to mention, let me just go back to my notes and just make sure. Um, no, I think that, that was it, but the, the other item I did want to bring up was just, um, obviously, we've been having these discussions around just, uh, Code Next, uh, the R1, uh, zoning. Obviously, we've received a lot of feedback from our constituents. We've been talking to, you know, we've had town halls, we've met with constituents. And, you know, obviously, the state is now looking at 213. I want to see if members of council would be willing to entertain the idea of just removing the R1 multifamily aspect that we've been discussing, uh, from the Code Next discussion, and continue on with Code Next, because obviously, I, I guess from my perspective, I kind of just rattled it off regarding 213. But obviously, meeting with certain groups of people within, uh, the city, uh, I mentioned Mr. Emo Heinz and, and, and his group, uh, they've really brought, uh, different perspective, different ideas about how we can increase density within the city without actually affecting the R1 areas. I do agree with him that there should be some sort of incremental change within Inglewood, or at least that's my takeaway of it. There should be some incremental change before we start making changes within the R1 areas in terms of multifamily. Um, so I do want to see whether or not other members of council are in agreement with that. Uh, but I do feel that maybe we potentially should remove the multifamily aspect out of the R1 and Code Next discussions. Uh, Member Anderson, I saw your line first, and then I'll go to Member Wink.
Yeah, I'll weigh in on this. I'm, I'm supportive of removing that consideration, um, for the up to fourplexes. I think I was pretty disappointed when I found out that the financial feasibility of the thing didn't work at, uh, at 80% AMI. Um, really, that really lost a lot of my interest in it at that point. And that was the point at which we, you know, we broke that off, um, from the rest of Code Next and then delayed it. Um, and I think we, you know, during our discussion at that council meeting, we, um, uh, we discussed only allowing one on a block every three years. I think for this point, for where Inglewood, where Inglewood is right now, this, um, removing this from consideration is, um, is best. I don't think it's going to give us the level of affordability that we had hoped, especially once that affordability requirement was, um, was raised up to 100% AMI. Um, so I'm supportive of that suggestion. Um, and then just, uh, removing that indefinitely and continuing on with Code, Code Next, um, to conclude that process without that piece in it is appropriate.
Thank you very much, Member Anderson. Uh, Member Wink?
Forgive me, counsel, didn't we all agree on this already? Or, what, what am I missing?
No, so we already agreed to remove that from Code Next such that we wouldn't take, you know, throw out the baby with the bathwater, because there was so much else in Code Next.
So we removed the affordability aspect. We were going to strip it away from, or we were going to break it up from Code Next. This is actually just having, uh,
Multi-unit.
Yeah, duplexes, triplexes, in R1. Regardless of whether it was corners or whatever the, but removing that aspect from it. So yeah, this is separate from the previous discussions.
Okay. Yeah, it, it falls in line with that previous discussion, in my view. I, I, I don't see any harm in removing it. I only see benefit to not cloud, um, decisions, right? That, that aren't so correlated. So I'm fine with that. We're just discussing it separately. I think that's fair, so I'm, I'm in support of that.
Thank you, Member Wink. Uh, Member Woodward?
Thank you. I am in support of that discussion. I've said all along, I think things needs to be a whole lot more strategic and a whole lot more planning than just blanketing the whole city and going that way. So yes, I would be in support to expand that conversation.
I think we're saying we're no longer going to converse on that issue. But no, I understand where you're coming from, Member Woodward, but no, I appreciate the, we have four, Member, uh, Member Noonan Camp?
I'm about to agree with Member Woodward, uh, but, um, wouldn't be the first time. Um, this has been a really important and robust conversation in our community. We've done a lot of citizen engagement, and that's the purpose of this, right? Is we're in the drafting phase. We've voted on anything, we're listening. I mean, I've met with ton, you know, dozens and dozens of residents. I had a two-and-a-half hour constituent meeting yesterday, like, we are listening to our residents. And what I think is helpful, and was I've listened to the feedback, and the question, and I think to Member Woodward's point, is what is our overall encompassing housing plan for the city? And in many ways, I think we all, many of us thought that we could have a lot of that conversation within Code Next. We did our housing feasibility study and our assessment, and all of these things was really helpful. But what we can handle in code, what we can do in our code to create naturally occurring affordable housing is just one piece of that puzzle, right? And it's become clear through the conversation that we need a more thoughtful, proactive, strategic plan for all of the housing in the city, rather than trying to just start with code. It feels like we almost went a little out of order. And so I do support indefinitely, uh, ending the conversation on, on R1. I think in the communications that we've done to, with the city to date, it has been delaying our conversation of R1 until after we know what the state is going to do. I think regardless of what the state does, we don't move forward with that. But what I would like to get support fully and clearly from this council on is we need a plan. We have, that's what our citizens are asking for. They want to understand what is the need, and what are we going to do about it, and how all the different areas of the community help solve that problem. Because it does, to, I think a lot of our residents feel like we're asking one part, part of the community to solve maybe more than what they would consider their fair share. And so I would like to have unanimous support from this council to move forward with a housing task force, with a strategic plan on housing, to consider what do we do for things that are at deeply affordable AMI levels, including market rate. We need a full, um, all-encompassing approach to this, because it is really important for our residents. So I don't think that we don't do anything on housing, but we, I would like to pursue it more strategically. That's the main feedback I've gotten from the community. And I think we can, we have so many smart people who have engaged with us over the last several months on this issue. We have so many good ideas from this community. We can engage them in how we solve this together. I think that's the Inglewood way to do it. So I support this change, and I'd like us to be able to communicate that to our citizens with the invitation to come help us be part of the solution.
Thank you for that, Member Noonan Camp. And I guess what I meant is that it's no longer, we're no longer discussing it as part of the changes, but I agree with you, there should be a task force. Uh, so I've been on board with that and, uh, would love to see us move in that direction. Member Russell?
I actually, I, I agree with that, but I have one other piece that I think this council needs to consider is removing ADUs off of the table of the R1 discussion also. Because if you take a fourplex on every corner, if you put an ADU in every backyard, it's going to increase the density more than a fourplex on the corner would cre, increase in an R1 district. So I would like to, uh, take ADUs off of the table right now in, in the R1 district as far as Code Next is concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Member Wink?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, may I pose a question to Member Russell? Uh, Member Russell, um, thank you for that. I understand fully why you're saying what you're saying. Is there something, some data that you have that, that leads you to believe that the growth of ADUs or the development of them is going to grow exponentially beyond what we've seen in, you know, the, the trends, the data that we've seen since we approved them in the city? I, I can't, I can't really, in, in my statistics brain, feel or see any data that makes me think, yeah, it might just explode, uh, but maybe I'm missing something because, so I, I tend to not want to support that, because I, I do think, as we've mentioned a few times, I just think we'll still have an extremely low, if not not, or, you know, marginal number of them. So I don't see the concern, but.
So, I mean, um, do I think it's going to happen tomorrow? Probably not. But once we open up ADUs as short-term rentals, it could exponentially explode. And so, I mean, some of the suggestions, I, I think are problematic. Once you start, um, limiting the number of ADUs, you open it up, but then you limit it, how's come you can have one, but I can't? I mean, I think we have to do it across the board the same. I, um, I don't want to open it up until we see how things are changing with the changes we've already made. Thank you.
Um, Member Anderson, and then I'll go to Mayor Potem, and then Member Woodward.
I'd just say, I think, um, I think Member Russell's on to something there that with regards to, um, the, you know, once, once we open it up, or if we try to limit it or something like that, people will say, why does my neighbor get to build one and I don't want to, I don't get to build one? I do think that ADUs were part of, the, the one difference between ADUs and the R1 stuff is that ADUs were part of the, the, um, Code Next conversation from the very beginning, um, expanding allowances for those. Um, and the R1 multifamily option was added in, uh, about November, I believe, after Root Policy Research came back. Um, and people really do want to have increased options for their properties. Not everyone, there are, there are people who don't, who don't want ADUs at all in the city. Um, but I do think ADUs provide an incredible opportunity for market rate affordability in a way that, that increases the wealth and value of the homes for Inglewood residents. This opens up great options for, for people who live here. They can add that ADU and then, um, increase, increase their own value of their property. So, um, I think we should continue on with the ADU discussion.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Mayor Potem?
I'm in alignment with Member Russell. Perhaps not for the same reasons, but, um, the two most controversial elements of the Code Next process, as I see them, have been R1 changes in density and ADUs. And, uh, if we're going to set aside the R1 changes in favor of a housing study, um, which I think is a great idea, and I'll note that on March 27th, this council received a letter, uh, from, uh, Thomas Sanders, who suggested what Member Noonan Camp, or something very similar to what Member Noonan Camp is proposing here, um, to establish a task force and take a little more global approach. Um, but, uh, on, on the ADU topic, uh, back to that, uh, I think it's, it's very closely aligned with the R1 density changes. Um, and, and so I, I would favor, you know, punting that ball, uh, to a later date, just like Member Russell.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Uh, Member Woodward?
Thank you. I think task force or council or whatever, but I think those groups have to get into a bus and start driving the areas and looking at the city, specifically looking at neighborhoods. Because it, it's, I don't think you can make a code that is good for Inglewood. Just one code and making one statement regarding that. I think there's places where there's cul-de-sacs, and all of a sudden you come to corners and, and nothing else works. Uh, cul-de-sacs that their backyard or beyond the fence in their backyard is Denver, which is Dartmouth, uh, Circle or whatever. Um, and so I, I can't stress enough how I think it takes us and a task force being able to go out there and really look at it and say, how does this fit there? And how does that fit there? Because it isn't going to all fit. You know, the other thing I wanted just to mention, Inglewood historically has had ADUs. When I moved to Inglewood in 1977, there were all kinds of alley houses with a house in the front and a house in the back. Um, I don't know when that started. I've heard stories that, oh, that started way back in the 1920s or whatever with Swedish. And tuberculosis and where people were living and stuff, some of these little houses on, uh, these five, 500, 600 square foot houses on the avenues. So ADUs are not all that new in Inglewood. They've been around. I had one burn down. Two houses down in the middle of the night, I didn't know it for a week because it didn't wake me up when the fire engines came and put it out. So anyway.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Member Noonan Camp, and then Member Russell?
Well, to Member Woodward's point, ADUs are not a new idea in Inglewood. This is part of our history. I don't think that this is a transformative change. But what we know is that in our current, the current form of our ordinance, which we passed at the end of 2018, less than 10 ADUs have been built under the current ordinance. And so I fundamentally see two things here. One, I think ADUs are a private property, right? I think that private property owners should have the right to build out on their property. And I think that right now, property, and I think that right now, the idea that they're legal in some zones and not in others is unfair to our citizens fundamentally as a private property issue. But secondly, I think the reason that ADUs are different than R1 is because we actually have taken an incremental approach on this, we have a historical standard, we passed an ordinance a few years ago, we tested it out, we've learned a lot since then, we realized the ordinance probably isn't working very well, and now we're ready to take the next incremental step for our city, based on what we already know to be true from four years of experience. This is how we make public policy better, that is the work of this body, um, I think, and, and how we protect private property rights, so I think that we are very well-positioned with a lot of understanding and research, and ADUs, I don't think will happen in every law overnight, and it's a gentle change of how we actually can, um, give people the freedom that they want on their property, so I, I'm not in support of pulling it out of Code Next, just because I think we already have history from the last few years that informed that decision.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp, Member Russell.
Thank you. Um, I, I just would like to address, um, Councilmember Woodward's historical issue. Um, I, I've lived in Inglewood for quite a while, the house that I grew up in when I was in junior high and high school, um, it had a basement apartment, ADUs have been around for a long time, there were probably, I grew up in the forty-four-hundred block of South Washington Street, there probably were five or six houses on that block that had basement apartments, but the house, um, what happens is they had those basement apartments historically for people to have places to live, and then they disallowed it. So the bottom line is, my mother could not rent out our basement apartment because it wasn't built in the timeframe when apartments were allowed, and, and so it comes and goes, and, and the city councils made decisions at different times to protect the health and safety. Here's the issue about ADUs, it is not a private property right, it is, um, that is determined by a city council because it has to do with the health and safety of the city, why, if you allow more people, there are reasons that they changed over the years, and there are some, there are some properties that, um, what do they call them, they're grandfathered in, um, so I, I think we are going to fundamentally change the quality of life in this city at the point that ADUs become so prolific, drive downtown Denver either on Logan or on Downing, um, on a weeknight after seven or eight o'clock at night or on the weekend, those three-lane, one-way roads turn into a single lane with parking on both sides of the street, people don't have room to park, parking is a huge issue, and we have the ability to stop that now, instead of increasing density so much that we don't have a quality of life here, so that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell, Member Noonan Camp.
The only other thing I'll say on this, and, and to Member Russell's point, we have a responsibility when we pass these things to ensure that we aren't doing anything that's reckless, you know, to the city, and so I know we will lean on our staff throughout this, this drafting process and throughout the public hearing process, that before we take our final vote on something, that we'll have assurances that our infrastructure, which is incredibly important that we, that we have the ability to withstand whatever changes we make, we, we will have that information before we make that decision, and I don't think anyone in this council would do so otherwise.
All right, I need to get a council, I'm in favor of keeping ADUs and for many of the reasons that were, uh, stated, um, I guess, Member Woodward, Member Wink, where do you fall in the discussion? Keep ADUs or remove ADUs from the discussion?
Keep ADUs.
Keep?
I, I would say keep, but limited, I mean, really look at it.
Yeah, and I agree with that aspect, uh, Member Woodward, I think that there should be additional discussion regarding, uh, what that may look like, obviously, we have citizens speak to it tonight, so, um, definitely feel that there should be additional discussion regarding that subject. Uh, Mayor Potem.
I, I don't think it, it matters now, so I'll let it go.
Thank you, Mayor Potem, and that, that's all I have for mayor's choice, so anybody have anything for council members' choice? Uh, go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you, um, I do have a question, uh, from the city attorney regarding Mr. Kozak's, um, request to expand it for sixty days, what he suggested is that the referendum process and the charter applies to laws, not to properties. Would that make a difference, I mean, is it possible that we could make a motion to, to increase the time to sixty days and not violate the charter?
I'm sorry, I'm not following completely, the time to do what, by sixty days?
Okay, so the, uh, for the referendum process on the Sam's property, that it is a property issue, uh, referendum instead of a law issue, um, ordinance?
No, unfortunately, um, we can't change the charter on this, so, um, the referendum applies to the, um, ordinance adopted, no matter what the subject matter is of the ordinance adopted, so those deadlines are set in charter, they're a law, and, and we can't change them by motion.
Okay, is it something that we could change with a charter change? I mean, I'm not necessarily saying that laws, I, I, I kind of think he maybe has a point that law and property are two different things, but-
Uh, yes, certainly, uh, the charter could be changed, um, at the ballot through citizen vote.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Potem.
I just wanted to piggyback on Member Russell's comments, I, I actually disagree with Mr. Kozak's analysis that these are separate issues, the way we establish a planned unit development is by ordinance, it is an act of law, uh, there are stacks and stacks of case law that talk about land use as a, as a legislative act, um, in a variety of ways, and this is one of the legislative acts that we have done, um, and, and therefore the thirty-day, um, standard applies per charter on a, uh, passage of an ordinance, which is what this was.
Anything else for council members' choice? C. Nun, City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I know the hour is late, but I do just want to, um, give the public, even though I've given council an update on some of the street maintenance work that we're doing and pothole work that we're doing, um, just to kind of give you, um, and the, and the public, it's, uh, sense of the scope of the issue, we've had ninety-seven, um, different potholes that have been reported through our IngleFix system just in the last six months, um, I am proud to say for our Public Works Department, they have closed all but two of those, um, as of Friday, and, um, are still working to really, um, work a plan that they have in place to be more proactive, that's the goal, is to move from reactive, um, work to proactive, as you in the Front Range experienced, um, massive amounts of potholes because of how long we had wet snow on our streets, and just continued moisture just deteriorates that road surface, gets into the base, and then the base fails, and so, um, we are, um, lucky though that we don't, no longer have the cold mix, um, shortage that we had, so we have been going in where we can and putting that coal mix, but it, it comes out so quickly because it can't adhere in cold temperatures, and so now that, as soon as we had those higher temperatures about three weeks ago, we had a contractor at the ready, in addition to our street crews, that were ready to go out, and, um, they have filled many, many, um, potholes since then. We also drove, um, the last week and a half of, uh, March, we drove every street, every block in Inglewood, and, um, our streets crew and other staff, and recorded each of the potholes that, um, are found on our streets, and so those have all been entered into Cartograph, which is our asset management system, and now Cartograph and IngleFix are working together, we've, we've configured that system where they can work together to automatically generate work orders, um, particularly when we have to fill with cold mix, that automatically generates a work order to where we can go back as soon as temperatures rise to put that hot mix in, so we're actively, um, doing that now, um, we also have, we are as close as we have been in several months to a fully-staffed street crew, we're only down one, um, and so we're getting those two additional staff members trained up and, um, are excited because they were really great recruits for that, so, um, and last but not least, we do have a contractor that was hired, um, uh, in March, that, um, has already applied a hundred and twenty-three tons of hot mix, um, to our utility cuts, they're, the contractor's focusing on utility cuts, which can be some of the kind of most worst jarring because they're square cuts in their road, so they are focusing on that, which we've had a record number of those, and then we also, um, have the streets crew working on the more traditional potholes in the streets, so, um, just wanted to report, reiterate for council, but also, um, let the members of public know that Director Rochelle, now in a three, a little over three months of work, has put together a tremendous plan, um, for that, I also want to thank Tim Dodd, who's working through a streets plat- plan, um, that should be done in the next couple of weeks, um, to really kind of codify, or, well, internally codify all of these, um, improvements that we're trying to make in that area, so, thank council for their feedback, um, on this, and certainly we've heard it from our IngleFix system of how, how significant the problem is, so, thank you, and I'm glad to answer any questions about that.
Thank you, City Manager Lewis. Automating that workflow from IngleFix to the asset management system, being in software, this is the stuff I love, so, I, I, yeah, I'm really happy about that, so thank you to Director Rochelle and his team, IT, I'm sure, was, uh, involved in terms of that integration, so, love that. Uh, Member Woodward.
Uh, questions on, for example, on Oxford, coming off of Broadway, going west on Oxford, there was two major areas that were cut, utility cuts or something, then they were patched, now, at least up till last week, I don't think I've been on it this week, um, driving down there, and it's within two or three blocks of coming off Broadway, the right side of the vehicle just bounces down and back up, and I know some work was done there probably within the last month, and whatever the repair was, wasn't completely repaired and certainly didn't repair the street. Um, and then one other question for the city manager, have we started flushing hydrants, or did we start?
Thank you for that question, I did see, um, Director Rochelle writing down that location, um, for that utility cut, um, in terms of the flushing, I met with the utilities director and deputy director last week, and they are about to start that work, um, that's another project that has to have warm weather or you risk the, you know, risk of it freezing, we do have snow projected next week, but I believe they told me that that is within the next month, that that will start, and we really talked about the need to, to message that, we always get complaints that we're wasting water, but particularly in that northwest, excuse me, northeast part of town, that flushing is key to improve taste and odor, because there is not good circulation in that part of town, and as, when water sits in those pipes for li- long periods of time, it does, you know, absorb the taste of the pipes more, and if we can keep these pipes flushed, um, as we work to loop the system and get more flow through the entire system, which is what utilities is working on, um, that will, that's, you know, there should be some improvement there, so we're going to be messaging that with the Communications Department.
Okay, yeah, I saw one being flushed today, and, and I was, you know, I thought, have they started that? Because it was only a block away from my house, and I thought, I want to know when that happens, so I have the cold water on and I don't want it in my hot water heater, uh, but I didn't see it anywhere after that, and the water that they were flushing was all dried up, it, it was warm enough with enough sun to dry it up, so.
Yeah, thank you for the question, I'll get back, I'm pretty sure the official flushing hasn't started yet, but whenever we have a line break or a repair, we do, you know, as a matter of practice, flush the line, um, to get any of the sediment that was created by the repair, so, I'll check on that.
Anything else, City Manager Lewis?
That's all.
Are you sure those weren't thirteen-year-olds getting a jumpstart on summer? Member Woodward?
Yeah, what?
All right, and with that, uh, the meeting is adjourned, everyone have a good evening.